Are the phones on silent?
And if you do that, then you'll be able to let in.
Okay. Because that was what I couldn't get the, because my time was off.
Yeah.
It was all this thing didn't work.
You can do that, and then like once I, once it's all.
I talked to the great Eric Johnson last night, and Eric Johnson.
Which one?
The former interim county administrator, Eric Johnson.
Oh.
All of them are great, but he was, I asked him, any advice as we're getting ready to go into this? Auto, just receive the information, be pragmatic, does what I like, we'll work and ask the questions.
Good morning. It is October thirteenth, it's nine o'clock, we're here for our budget workshop. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the budget workshop is Mr. Anderson's presentation. Mr. Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I don't know if the screen can switch over to. Mine, I stole Brian's HDMI.
Do you want us on this budget highlights preliminary?
Yeah, that's what I have on, I mean, that's what I have up on here, but I don't even, I'm probably not going to go through everything on here. I've got more of a sheet of my own than I was gonna just talk about. But if there's things on here that anyone wants to mention and bring up, we certainly can talk about it. But I'm probably just gonna go off script and just generally talk about the state of the counties, where we're at. So we do have an initial deficit of forty-eight thousand two oh two. So with baseline budgeting, the departments come up with revenue forecasts of their own. They should be looking at contracts and doing other procedures to figure out what the revenues are. And they input those on their own. And then, as far as expenditures, generally, most, most just carry forward from last year to this year. And so if there's any changes to it, you have to ask for it. And so with that, with that, so we've got a forty-eight thousand two oh two initial deficit, but there's some significant requests that, you know, some of these are likely unavoidable just because of resolutions that have been signed and other reasons, mandates from the state, whatever. That, so for example, we've got one point three million dollars that's in as a request to the emergency communications fund for user radio and microwave upgrade fees. And this contract with, was approved with resolution twenty twenty-two, three oh four to fund that over the next ten years. And then there's, I've got one point four million dollars in there as a, to work our way towards funding the reserve fund policy, resolution twenty twenty-five, two one four. So that one point four would be essentially one-fifth of what we would need to fund the reserve fund over a five-year period, which is kind of what was stipulated in the resolution itself. There's a six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollar request for superior court contracts and OPD. That's a request, and you know, they had, they recently came in, probably a month ago, and asked for additional money this year due to just, you know, increased costs in there. There's four hundred and seventy-two thousand in corrections for medical services. So that in the twenty twenty-five budget was reduced due to some Medicaid funding that was coming in. Ultimately, they, it looks like, you know, they're saying they're gonna need that money again in twenty twenty-six. So if you, so if you added in those four requests right there, we'd be at a deficit of three point nine million dollars. So almost four million, four million dollars. And I just, you know, thought I'd mention what I've seen throughout the state as far as other counties. We're not, we're not alone in where we're at as far as the county's budget. Just quickly looking at, from the Washington State Association of Counties, for one was one, one place I was looking at, but just Googling different, different counties, and I saw that Clallam County had an original deficit projection of three point three million dollars. Now it's, they've got it down to one point nine, trying to avoid layoffs. Thurston County has a projected general deficit of thirty-six million dollars and was asking departments to find ways to cut about twenty-six percent of spending in their general fund allocations. Spokane County, twenty million dollars, asking departments to cut spending. Kitsap, eight million dollars. King County, a hundred and fifty million dollars over their twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven biennial budget. So there's a, it seems like just about every week I'm seeing another article for a county that's got some pretty big deficits right now that they're facing. So it seems like it's a, it's a, you know, and, well, and then you look at the state budget and federal, federal budgets, there's, it seems like everywhere, everybody's facing these budget, budget concerns right now. You know, and one of the, one of the reasons for us is just sales tax in the treasurer's office. The, this is regarding the main sales tax line, that we've got several different sales tax taxes that we collect, but the, the general sales tax that we collect, that's, it's about eighteen percent of our revenue budget when you exclude beginning fund, beginning fund balance. And if you look back at previous years, the, the kind of increases that we were seeing through the years, we, it's really been a huge boost to the county that it doesn't look like we're gonna see for this current, this current year. From two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, we had a thirteen point seven seven percent increase. There were about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. From twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, we had a nineteen point eight percent increase. And this is just sales tax, which was a one million thirty thousand dollar increase. From twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, we had a twelve point two nine percent increase, which was seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And then we had a slight blip in twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three where we actually had a zero point three five percent decrease, twenty-five thousand dollars. So it stayed about flat. And then twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, another eleven point nine four percent increase for eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And then currently for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, we've got a, we're currently running a seven point eight two percent decrease. Right now, we're, we're three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars less than last year comparison. You know, and, and, you know, sales tax is huge to us. Besides sales tax, we've got property tax, which is another twenty-six point nine seven percent of the budget. So between those two, forty-five point one five percent of the overall revenue budget. But there's other, there's other revenue, we've got a criminal justice tax in the, in our one oh one, seven twenty, aid to other governments' budget. We've got a juvenile sales tax. We do a transfer in from our point oh oh three criminal justice sales tax fund, which was used, that money was used to fund the, pays for a bond that funds the jail, and it was a jail construction and software when we got that about ten years ago. And so we transfer in the excess of that into current expense. So, so even, even more with that, when you add in those, our budget's about sixty-three percent reliant on sales, sales and property tax. So there's not a whole lot of other stuff that, that's a major component of our budget. And, you know, even, even more, that's sixty-two point seven six percent, but then there's, there's other funds too that, that do contributions to current expense that, that have a sales tax component of them as well. The mental health fund, which has a combination of, they, it collects a combination of property and sales tax. But that, we've been transferring some money from that each year here recently. There's, you know, and there's other activities that would potentially be funded by current expense if, if, if we didn't have, oh, there's like our, oh, the, what's the word? The, the one eleven, I can't think of the word now.
Point oh nine.
Yeah, the point, thank you, the point, the distressed county, that's the, that's the word I was looking for, distressed county, thank you. Distressed county that pays for, and it pays for stuff in other, for other districts and stuff too, but it's things that, you know, potentially we'd have to foot the bill on if, if, if we didn't have that. And so we're very reliant on sales tax. So, you know, once again, sales and property, those are two biggest things. So when, when those are seeing the, the lull that we're seeing, you know, it just kind of, not a great sign for us. This, not a, I mean, this, maybe kind of hard to see, this is just sales tax from two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-five, and this is a trend line of that, of that sales tax. And, you know, in some of these years, you have a lot of the stuff that's above the trend line. We were having some really great, great years. I mean, like I said, in some of those, we had over a million dollars over. Here, in more recent months, we're seeing a lot more of our months that are below the, below the forecast, below the trend line. And, and like I said, we're, year over year, from last year to this year, we're, we're less than, less than the last year. And we've got a, so we've got eight million dollars budgeted for twenty twenty-six. Currently, the treasurer's office, not to steal their thunder, but they've, they've got it budgeted at seven million, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six. So, you know, even less of a budget than what we've got budgeted this year. Other than that, I mean, you know, I don't wanna, I don't think I, you guys have the packet. Feel free to look at all this stuff on here. I mean, you know, as far as our budget, salaries and benefits, it's a huge part of the overall budget. About twenty-nine million dollars is what we have on the, the twenty twenty-six prelim. And I'll continue to update those as we, as we go on, update if there's people leave or new employees come in. I'll, I'll continue to keep those numbers updated until we adopt or close to. You know, and one of the things that will change too is we recently had some health benefit changes. Some of the rates were changed without the premier came back with. And so that, I haven't had a chance to update that, which, part of that is, is that until, until we have open enrollment, I won't have, you know, perfect numbers until open enrollment anyway, because I, I won't know what plan people are changing. And in some cases, some, some of the unions, currently, some of the unions, it's a flat rate as, as we used to do for everybody, it's a flat rate that they get. But for example, for non-bar, it's a variable, it's a varying rate depending on what plan you choose, whether you choose the one thousand dollar family plan or the three thousand dollar employee only. It's a differing, different rate for everybody. Right now, the, the resolution that was most recently approved, approved that it would pay for ninety percent of, of the premium up to, there was a cap on that. But essentially, for, for a lot of people, it's ninety percent of the premium that would get paid. And so depending on the plan you choose, there's a different cost. And so really, I need to get to open enrollment to be able to see what people chose so I can, so I can have that inaccurate reflection of the cost in, in here. Other than that, I mean, I, I mentioned some of the, some of the big requests that are in there, but you know, there's total of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in personnel, six FTE and some other various changes, other than personnel services, which includes some of those I just mentioned, the superior court contracts and OPD, the, the transfer firm in emergency communications. We've got six million dollars, and there's another seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for capital requests.
What was the amount for the emergency radios?
One point three.
One point three million.
One point three million, yes. And that is a, so last year, they actually had enough in the fund to essentially cover most of the costs. They did pay, they did pay about a million dollars more than what they had previously, but there was enough built up of reserves to where there wasn't as big of a hit to current expense as, as what it's looking, looking like there will be this year. And that's, you know, with the baseline budgeting, I didn't change the, because it was a hundred thousand, I think, last year is what current expense transferred. And so I didn't, you know, add that one point three, because with baseline budgeting, I just move over what was, what was given last year, which was a hundred thousand dollars, even, even knowing that, even knowing this, what had happened. That's pretty much all I have, any, any other questions?
Not sure. Yeah, thank you, Tim. Describe to me how that we'll go through this from the FTE request and capital express request. When, when will we go through those, item by item? Just as the departments present?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that, that briefing.
And did you get this layout of?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, that's the orders, we're gonna go in? Mr. Danzel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Anderson said, who does a phenomenal job, by the way, thank you, sir, for all of your efforts. It's not that we are in a great position, obviously, however, compared to some of the other counties and what they're struggling through, I feel that we're extraordinarily lucky with where we are and some of the decisions you made previously to head some of that off. The place that I like to look on these is the beginning fund balance and see what the trend is. And so while we have major challenges, you'll see that we're at least not in a declining fund balance situation. When you get to that, like what happened between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, that's when it can really start going off the rails. So just kind of a, my observation so far is that we are gonna have to stand pat, I believe, on everything you gentlemen have discussed when it comes to holding the tight reins on the budget. However, I think we're in a better position than a lot of other counties for two main reasons. The assessor's here, and I'm sure he'll agree, but one would be new construction. And the other is we have revenue generators, sales tax revenue generators, and in other counties just don't. So, that being said, I think that we're gonna have a lot of requests that are made that are gonna put us outside of where we would be in a negative, a declining fund balance. If we were to say yes to these requests, we would not only be in a negative, declining fund balance, but that ten point six eight million dollars would go down to something like three million. So you don't want that to happen. And just another thank you to Tim and just my observation from the very first spreadsheet.
Thank you, sir.
So, Tim, would you help me make sure that I'm understanding? So this is where we ended twenty-three actual, we started twenty-four, ended twenty-four, start twenty-five?
Correct.
So this is where our ending, our beginning fund balance was in twenty twenty-five?
Correct, and so the, the three point nine was a, at the time, it was the, it was just, it was the budgeted fund balance. But it's going to, it, it looks like it's gonna come in quite a bit higher than. And, and we typically do, I will say that we typically do budget a higher beginning fund balance than ending fund balance. Part of that is, is because historically, we've, we've had more revenue than, than what we budgeted and less spending than what, than what's budgeted. And, and part of the reason for that is you end up having, or a lot of the reason for the, the, on the expenditure side is salaries and benefits, you have vacancies. And so, for example, for this year, I think we already have about a million and a half of vacancies savings, just unfilled positions that, so through nine months of the year, I'm pretty sure it was right around one and a half million dollars that we've seen. So we're trending to, you know, be to two million dollars by the end of the year. And so that's a big piece of it, but just, just by nature within the budgets, if you have a, you know, fifty thousand dollars, you're typically not going to be able to spend every single penny of that fifty thousand dollars, because you're, you're restrained to that fifty thousand dollars. So you might spend, you know, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine thousand of it, but you'd have to ask, if you're gonna go above that, you'd have to ask for more. And so just by nature of the budgets in general in our office, checking that you don't go over, you're, you're constrained to, to that. And so there's, there's a piece of that as well. And so, and then typically, we do bring in, historically, we end up bringing in about a hundred and five percent of, of the revenue, of what we budget for revenues. We've historically brought in about a hundred and five percent. So bring in a little bit more than, and I think that part of that, just the conservative nature of the departments with their revenue estimates, they don't want to come in saying that they're gonna bring in, you know, two million dollars and only bring in one point five. So I think they're generally relatively conservative on that. And so then it winds up coming in slightly higher than what they have. And so when you have that across all county departments, you wind up having, having a little bit more that you collect during the year than what you've, than what you've budgeted. So the excess of revenues, the, the, the spending that doesn't happen winds up being that we end up, so we end up, you know, because typically you'd want, you wouldn't want your, to, you wouldn't want to end with less than what you started. And so, and so that's, but as far as this, yeah, we're, we're looking to wind up being much closer to ten million, six hundred and eighty thousand. I think at the last budget review committee meeting that we had, I think I actually had it projected. I think it might have been ten million, four hundred thousand dollars. I'll continue to look at this and, and adjust it as necessary. But right now, we're looking to hit a little more than ten million anyway.
So the budget that we're, that we're gonna start workshopping here is projecting to take some of this and, and pull it back down to, to here?
Yes, except for, I, I tend to think that we're budgeting this, but historically, like I say, with, with two million dollars of, you know, if the trends continue, if we had vacancy savings, which typically we do, you know, million dollars plus, and then excess revenue, you know, the hope would be that we come in, we're gonna budget this, but hopefully we still come in, you know, closer to the ten million, six hundred and eighty thousand when all things play out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Danzel?
I just, I, that's the proper way to do this. You, the people that are right now having real problems are the ones that are thinking they're gonna get ten point six and they're gonna get three point nine. And so I appreciate the way that we, that we do that and that we budget for that. My question would be that I would assume eventually, when we get to a point where we can, and it's part of what our, kind of our, not just our program is this year, but Tim had mentioned it in previous emails and communications to us and to this board, would be, maybe that could be a place also where we start to put together a reserve. That's, that's one of the things that we're trying to accomplish this year, so that we can be resilient to some of these things. As you saw, if you saw the revenue tax trend, the sales tax revenue trend that Tim had up, I guess there are a couple of things, you can count for like nineteen and twenty, some of that, twenty-one, maybe like for COVID. But if you look at what's kind of, this is a part that is not worrying, but scares me, is that we're kind of, we're mirroring a little bit what we had happen there, and I think we're slowing down to a certain degree. And so I think it's only wise to, to be very, very conservative with, with these figures. Thank you.
And I would just like to say thank you to the departments for being proactive, because you never want to forecast, as a farmer, you never want to forecast your hay to be three hundred and fifty dollars when this year we're selling it for a hundred and fifty, at the most. It's down to a hundred and thirty, a hundred and twenty. So you can't forecast profit when you don't have it. And I appreciate the departments doing that in their departments and being very fugal with their forecasts. So thank you. So with that, I guess we will start with the first department, which is the assessor's office. Mr. Rosenoff? There we go, now it's working.
So as far as the budget requests this year, the revenues, we projected last year, we actually exceeded those because we were able to build the port and the city for some of the TIF work. But again, I do not want to overly list revenues. So we've got revenues this year that, that we're looking at about seventy-five hundred dollars and two thousand dollars for open space processing. So like ninety-five hundred bucks for revenue income. Usually, we're way less than that in previous years. You can see we've budgeted eighteen hundred, you know, six thousand, I mean, pretty, pretty minor on revenue income. The majority of the revenues that, basically, the work that we do, that the county gets the revenues from, doesn't come into a GL as revenues for our department. It goes into the treasurer's office or general fund. And I've got some of those numbers, because they equate to actually millions of dollars each year. But it's not specifically to a GL that we count as an internal revenue for our department. On expenses, we're trying to keep this down really tight. Salaries and that are set as they are, but if you get into, pass the salaries, you move into what we have some control over. Let's see, office supplies, we've actually cut that by five hundred dollars. We've cut our GIS supplies by six hundred, so from the previous year on those. We have had to increase our postage by six thousand. We currently was adopted at sixteen thousand last year. I can tell you, we're already over twenty-two thousand on postage this year. Postage is just atrocious on that. We have tried to offset it in other areas. Now, I will show you the cell phone reimbursement and wireless communications. We show a reduction of thirty-six hundred and an increase of thirty-six hundred. There's a wash there, and what that is, is getting us away from a software program to actually county cell phones. And, and Bo and I have worked on, on, on that because of the, the service on that software, on the current phones that they have. There's so many dead areas, you can't even communicate, you can't work it. And so for the same cost, we can actually put them into county phones with good connectivity and good service and be a wash on the, on the cost, on the funds. So it's getting rid of one service and getting another one that we've had terrible, terrible service with the one, on the, the reimbursement part of it. So we'll switch that over.
John, can I ask you which one you got away from and which one you went to?
Okay, the cell phone reimbursement, we're subtracting thirty-six hundred.
No, what carrier?
It, it actually, it's a software that, that ISs uses, so it's not a carrier.
It's satellite?
No, it's, it's a, it goes through a cell service, but it's software to where they use their personal phone, but it's a separate phone number through software that people dial, so that it's not, their personal phones aren't subject to the public disclosure.
You're talking to Cell Trust?
Cell Trust.
It's, yeah, it's an app that's installed on your phone.
And it's terrible, it just doesn't work good. The moment we move into the county at all, you lose all service, you can't talk to them, you can't communicate. And so Bo's recommendation, and we talked about it a few months ago, is to switch over. I wanted to wait till the first of the year on budget changes, to actually a county phone versus them reimbursed for the other. And it's a wash on the funds.
And I think we really need to be looking at the, what's coming in front of us here, the future. And that is off these low-hanging satellites, and as soon as it's available, I think we need to be moving to that direction.
Yeah, but they're just not offered yet, but once it does, I'm all for that communication.
Starlink is here, it's coming.
Oh, yeah, but it's on the phone part of it.
And their phones. They have Starlink phones.
Yeah, and I don't know what that cost would be. I don't, I mean, I've looked at it personally, and it's pretty expensive. But we'll go the cheapest route, and if it gets cheaper for next year, I'll propose that. I honestly will, because we need good connectivity out there on it. So many of the areas, well, we've got areas where deputies won't go into without two deputies. And yet, my appraisal staff is required to go out there by themselves. I want good communication. And, and we really are cautious of where we will send them and when without proper backing. when, without proper backup as far as knowledge. And we've worked with the sheriff's office to make sure they're aware when we're going into an area. And they, they work with us very well to make sure that they've got coverage when we're out in that, that spot. So does the city of Pasco. They do the same thing on that. So those are a wash as far as that goes. The copier lease, that's an increase of 1,150. We got a new contract. The contract still says the same, but every single year, we end up having to do more copies than what the contract allows and we end up paying more. And we haven't shown that in a budget properly in the past. So I'm trying to get it to where each line item is much more accurate as far as the actual expense, instead of just absorbing it in some other line item. So we certainly are increasing that. Repair and maintenance, I'm able to decrease that by 1,150 to try to offset that copier lease increase. So it's kind of a wash on, on expenses. Now, that would be for this coming year.
Question for you.
Yes.
So this rate, you went over on your, so this is, this is where you were and you're adding this much on top of it?
Well, in order to have a line item budget for what was adopted, because we will go over this year even.
So in previous years?
But I'm taking it out of other line items.
So in 2023, they spent right at 3,029.99.
And then 31.
24, 31.99. They budgeted, they have 26.96 in 2025.
Right.
And so, I mean, between the two.
37, 3800. And that's, that's if we go over on how many copies we have to make and all of that stuff. So.
This number should be 36?
It would be 37 something. It'd be add 1,150 to it. And that's going to be real close to what it actually costs for the copier and, and all the materials and all of that. Not the paper, we buy that under a separate line item, but, but the servicing and everything else.
Okay, so help me know, help me understand how to read this. So I need to, I need to add this number and this number together, this one and this one, this one and this one?
Correct. Yes. And if it's, if it's in parentheses, you're subtracting that much.
Right.
Okay, if it's in parentheses, you're subtracting that much.
I understand that. So this preliminary budget for 2026 is not 26.96, it's 26.96 plus 1,150.
Well, 26.96 is what Tim had in there to carry over to kind of show what the, would be. I'm saying it needs to be higher than that to make the expenses.
Got it. So this is Tim's preliminary numbers.
Yes.
And this is, this is what you believe should be added or subtracted from.
Correct. And if you'll see there, I'm subtracting 2,200 overall from my budget.
Yep.
And then I'm increasing revenue. So my budget will actually be net smaller than last year, than this year for next year.
I, I, thank you. I'm not finding fault. I'm just trying to understand here. So thank you.
So with the baseline budgeting that the county does, typically what you have for the adopted 2025 budget would carry forward to 2026. So then you start with what you got previously. And then if you want any changes, if you want any changes to it, then it shows up in this column.
Now, I do want to point out that bottom one where it says recording fees, I'm increasing $2,000 to that.
You do have a pointer laying right there on the desk?
Oh.
And Tim, will you explain the red flags in the corner?
The red flags mean there's a comment there. So you can, you can click on it and see.
Just want to make sure that Stephen knew that.
Yeah. So if you look at this 9,000 right here for preliminary and adopted for last year for recording fees, and I've increased that by $2,000, that is a pass through. We collect the money from individuals that are doing current use, removals, addition, so forth. And for the, what has to get recorded, we collect that, okay? But the money then goes into a GL that is credited in the treasurer's department. So they show that as a revenue. We don't get to show it in my office as a revenue, but it comes out of my budget as an expense. So we're already over 9,000 this year, and we've still got a few months to go. But the money has come in, it just, we don't get credit as a revenue. So that's showing $2,000 increase there for $11,000, which actually is a pass through. The money goes to the treasurer's office in a, in one of their general ledger or in a, in a GL. So that added 2,000, but we're still 2,200 below on my requests from last year.
So Tim, would you click on that red flag? Does that explain that in that red flag? Because Commissioner Mullen's going to need to hear this. Yeah, pass through.
Yep.
Does that explain, does it, does it say pass through? Doesn't.
Just says assessor's office then sent to the treasurer's office and credited to a GL. The treasurer's office has a receivable. These items show as a budget expense to the assessor's office, but not as a receivable to the assessor's office.
But we didn't get to show it as a receivable, just an expense.
Explain it so he can get on there.
Yep, you betcha.
Oh, okay. Recording fees, oh, sorry, recording fees are a pass through fee that is paid by the individuals to the, the whole thing wasn't shown.
Yeah, you got to go up and get the whole thing that I put in. Okay. So, yeah, that, that's a pass through. Now, again, we will be billing for some of the TIF work that we do for the city and, and the port. We don't know what that'll be yet because we're still doing it.
Will we be able to recoup what it cost?
What, what, what it costs, not for what you're losing in your tax base, but what we actually cost my department, we have gotten a breakdown from the HR department and from the auditor's office as to what is the actual cost of that employee with benefits and all of those things, right? Medical, everything. So we get an hourly rate for that, okay? We track every single parcel that we work on, on behalf of the city or the port for the TIF, the person that's doing that. We calculate what that wage loss is. And I figure in there, the usage of our software, our computers, our, all of that has got about a 10% bump then. And I bill the city and the port for that. And they did pay us this year, 13, $14,000 is what that was, just for our people to go out and do the, the changes for just those two little areas.
What about vehicle and travel and that? Is that all figured out?
Well, that's what I figured, the 10% bump.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's very reasonable for what we're doing because if you think about it, we're not making a ton of trips, you know. You know, you go out to Derrigold, you're, you're maybe out there for twice. And, and we're already on the road doing other things anyway. So, and the same thing with the port out in the Broadmoor area. So where that's at. So those are those. Now, I will tell you that, and the county administrator mentioned it as far as the new construction. We keep saying that new construction is going to back off. And maybe it will at some point. I think we will probably have a little bit less. The biggest impact, and I've got some numbers, I just want to, I'll throw these at you and then I can certainly give you each a sheet if you want it to, would be called sheet number A. The dollar amount for this year in the 25 budget, not the 26 budget, the 25 budget to the county, the dollar amount in new construction was $422,000. Your 1% increase is only like $120,000.
So new construction tax increase is 422?
Yes. Now, certainly you had to pay money on the TIF and you had to send some to the city, some to the port. But it raised your lawful highest on your budgets by 422,000 plus, okay? 23 was 444,000, or 24. 23 was 553,000. 22 was 328,000 and 21 was 331,000. This is just for the county's piece of it. Since I came into office, since you selected me and then I was elected twice, just for the county, it has increased your budget by $2, 79,000. New construction alone, just new construction.
So doing some rough math, that's almost 500 million in new construction?
On average. Well, a little less. It was 422 for, for this year.
So that's 422,000 of collections.
Collection. And you only get that based on what the levy rate is. So give you an example, our levy rate right now is around 76 cents for the county's piece of it this year. We did 585 million this year in new construction, the most in any single year. You will take that at the 76 cents, say, and that will tell you what the money will be. And we're meeting with Tim here in a couple of weeks, I think it is, to give him those, those numbers. But whatever that roughly comes out to is what the added increase to your budget will be for new construction for next year. Okay?
That was, that was what my question is.
Now, that is only for the county. So just to give you an example, over that same period of time, for all the different taxing entities that we are responsible for the new construction on, the county gets their dollars, just for all of the taxing entities, I mean, the fire districts, the cities, the hospital districts, cemeteries, and the road department, okay? Because they get some. That totals 5.5 million dollar increase to their budgets just from new construction since 21. 5.5 million.
So the 585 million, that's new construction across the county?
Correct.
And then the other, okay, I understand.
Yeah, that's, that's total across the county. Now, now each, like the city of Pasco will have some of that, but they're not going to have the whole 585 million. And you go out to like the hospital district, they might be down to just maybe 10 or 15, 20,000 out in the hospital district because that's the new construction in that area. Each one of them have their own calculation on that. So, and then on another area, I don't want to take up a ton of time, but, but we didn't get started on time. We were a little bit late getting started. There's another revenue source that we do all the work for that I wanted to point out so you know kind of what's happening. And that has to do with any properties that are coming out of agricultural current use and going back into a standard taxable status. It was that they had to pay back seven back years plus interest and so forth. Now, as of the first of September, they only have to pay back four years now. Legislature changed that. So they pay back four years plus interest. Any of the back taxes gets just broken up based on the district, all the taxing districts that they're located in. So county get a piece, if they're in the city, the city gets a piece. If they're in District Three, they get a piece on that. So in 2024, THO's funds amounted to $1,034,000 in extra income to the taxing districts.
How much was that?
1,034,024. Year to date, as of, well, I should say as of October 1st, this year, it's 736,000. Just from, and that's all the work that my office does just on the calculations and removal. Now, we send that data up the treasurer's office, they send the bill, they collect the money. So they get the revenue income on their GL. But we calculate everything, we do all of the work on it. Now, out of that, any interest that is paid goes straight to the county's general fund. It does not get divided up amongst all the different taxing districts. The county gets all of the interest off of it. In 2024, that amounted to $237,000 in additional interest that the county got.
How much?
237,000.
So let me make sure I heard you.
Yep.
So 2025, the taxes we received from land coming out of open space, the back taxes to the county was 736,000.
To all taxing districts, not just the county. County gets its share. That's all taxing districts. It's divided up based on the school districts, state schools, all of them get their share. Okay? But the interest the county gets to all of it for your general fund, it doesn't go to the other taxing districts. And for 2024 was 237,000. For 2025, as of the first of October, was 170,000 in additional interest. Now, when you're talking about sales tax interest and revenues coming in, and you're talking about other revenues coming in that's reported, and last year I told all of you, I don't expect as much in sales tax just from the type of new construction being done. Because not all new construction brings in sales tax. And we had a big facility that bought stuff in another county and trucked it in themselves. So they'd save sales tax, right? So that happens. I do not anticipate us hitting this exact same number this next year on stuff coming out of current use for the, the interest. It'll be close. It will be close because there's still quite a bit that's being done with development. But it's not going to hold to the 237. And like I said, 170 to date, so it's going to hit close to the 230. It's going to be shy of that, probably 20%. Just straight up front, that's my projection on that type of interest income. So.
So these lands that are being sold to school districts, the port of Pasco, are they having to be taken out of current use before they're sold?
If they're going to be continued to be farmed and leased back out for farming, no, they meet the state requirements. But most of those are, and contractors or developers, most of those are immediately going to start working on development. They're not going to be farming it. And we require them to pull it out immediately. Yeah, we don't allow them to keep it in unless it's going to be farmed. We certainly know that there are entities that will turn around for a year or two or three and lease it, and it is in farming. They have to do a farm plan. They have to fill out the paperwork. They have to qualify. It's not automatic. We look at each one individually. And it has to be used for ag purposes. I'm very strict on that.
They have to show receipts?
Uh, no, not if they're over 20 acres. They have to show the plan. If they're under 20 acres, we have to have three out of five years where they have to prove an income. But if it's over 20 and it's actually in farmland, we know they're meeting the minimums because it is being farmed. Now, if they just leave it out, they're just going to just plow it under and just leave it dormant there, then nothing's being grown on it. Then no, we won't allow them to leave it in. Won't do it.
We're seeing a lot of orchards being pulled out right now.
Correct. And I'm glad you mentioned that. We have to have them let us know before the first of the year.
I'm letting them, I'm telling everybody to get ahold of you.
And if they call us, we go out and verify they're tearing it out. And then they will not owe that tax next year on that.
And that tax is three times higher than what we're paying for open spaces?
Uh, depending on the crops, depending on what it is, it can be. Yes, it can be. They still get the open space. It's just they have a permanent crop tax that the state has on it. So, and we will remove that. If they wait till after the first of the year, state law says they're stuck for that whole year. We don't want them stuck. I want them to call our office and we'll get somebody out there to verify the crops.
Mr. Danzel, I think we need to put something on our website and alert the public that if they're pulling out orchard, that they need to get ahold of the assessor before the end of the year.
So any permanent crop, right?
Any permanent crop. And like asparagus is considered a permanent crop. But, but, the fruit trees and grapes, anything like that. Yeah. We have to verify it before the first of the year. We have to physically be, they can't call me the last day of this year in December and we can't get somebody out that quick. But if they let us know right away, we'll send somebody out to verify it. And then we remove that.
So would you expand on the, one of the questions you were answering that, that Clint had about the port and their land owned and, and taxes? So does the?
The, the port is exempt. They're like the city. They're like, they're exempt from property tax.
So when the port, there's in the Tri-City Area Journal of Business, they've been talking about the port buying new land and in negotiations and so forth. So if the port goes out here and buys a, just say a, you know, 160 acre quarter section at the Ryman Industrial Center, does that come off of the tax rolls?
It does. That comes off the tax rolls. But I can say this, because Clint's brought up good points in the past on this. I don't know if I'll ever convince you 100% of what we're doing right, Clint. But, but he's brought up the fact that, that some of the high prices are being paid by some of them. Some of those, we understand are not what we would call arms length transactions. Okay? And so we won't count those in for calculating values.
I, that, that part, I appreciate what you're saying. I think I understand that. My, my question is more of, so the port buys 160 acres, they take it, it comes off of the tax rolls. It goes back onto the tax rolls when they sell it to company X.
Correct.
And then it comes back onto the tax rolls. So, so, okay, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to balance that with, with private business versus, you know, the port doing things.
So one of the things that can happen there, it can be pro or con, usually that's a pro in some ways, yes. If the port buys something or any of the entities, the city or whatever, it then comes off the tax roll then, right? For the remainder of whatever that year is on there. However, if somebody then buys the land, and let's say they buy that land in September or October, they have to pay the taxes all the way back to January. They don't get to start just that last three or four months. That's the way the state law is set up.
But, but only inside of that year. So if they buy it on January 1st, they don't pay last year's taxes.
No, they do not. It is clear. But norm- But normally, the port or somebody would be buying land that would be currently in, say, in current use, which that is minimally assessed anyway compared to what the market value would be. And when they're selling it, it usually comes in at the market value is going to be the assessed value, it's not under a current use farming program. And so the taxes that are going to get paid are going to be considerably higher for whoever's buying it from the port for development, like Dairy Gold or whoever. So there's a benefit that way if that occurs.
Yeah, I, my, my thought process or question is surrounded on the port is competing with private business at a significant advantage because they don't pay the same taxes that private business would do to do the same, the same function. And so it's the burden of those taxes that, that would have been paid on that ground transfers to everybody else, all the rest of the taxpayers in the county. And so that, depending on the size of the sale, et cetera, that could significantly impact levy rates. If that shifted, if it's a large sale purchase, it could shift, it would shift then on to the rest of the taxpayers.
Yeah, and not just the county's levy rate, but any taxing district or entity in that. So, and you bring up a very good point there because the assessor's office does not set the budgets of the taxing districts. All we do is apply them to the land that's out there. So if all of a sudden something becomes exempt, we still have to take that budget amount that would have been there and apply it to the properties that are not exempt.
That, that's why.
And that sets the levy rates.
That's just why I'm, I'm trying to balance that versus some of the stories I've been reading in the media of, of some of these large sales that, that may be taking place. And so, you know, armchair, armchair calculations of, of what that transfer looks like transferring, you know, risk or burden on to the other taxpayers because the, the port being a public entity doesn't pay the same taxes or doesn't pay the taxes, so it's just transferring that to everybody else.
Yeah, it, it, it does. In most cases, it's, it's fairly small because it's like 160 acre parcel inside of a taxing district, unless it's going to be like a library, I mean, a cemetery district or one of those, doesn't make a whole lot of difference, but it does transfer. It does shift it. Which, it, let me mention one other thing on shifting. When I came in, and you all know, I've really pushed hard, and I know we need to cut it, but I've pushed real, real hard to make sure that the, the people that qualify for exemptions, the seniors, the disabled veterans, disabled individuals, to increase that. We have increased since I've been in office by over 40% the people that are in that program. That's a lot, it's over 1,200 people now, and we audit those every single year. I mean, they have to come in with all the documentation, the expense, we have to sit down like an accountant in a mini audit and audit all of those, where we've increased by over 40% those. Approximately 10% of the senior households in this county are qualifying in our program now, approximately 10%.
Senior being 65 and older?
61 and older.
61?
With 61 is, is where the, the cutoff is, 61 years old, always has been with this program for many, many years now. I can't say forever, but for, for at least the last eight, 10 years, it's been 61. The current income for qualifying is 61,000, and there's some adjustments on there depending. It, it's not net like your federal income tax, you're bringing it in and say, I got all these deductions. The state doesn't allow all the same deductions a fed does, and they allow some other things the fed don't. We have to actually go by what the state law is and what can be or can't be allowed. But we have approximately 10% of our senior houses in the program. I mean, that's very, very successful for what we've been able to accomplish. Now, what they would have paid shifts to all the other taxpayers.
Yep.
But that is state law, and we're following that. And, and the same thing with disabled vets, and a year from now, disabled vets would qualify currently at between 80 and 100% service disability. For 2027, they can qualify with a 40% service disability. Income still counts, not the income from the disability, but other incomes, they still have to qualify of a household income. So it's just not automatic. But those are some things that the, the state legislature has changed that we have to implement and oversee on that.
Anything else?
That's, that's it, we're trying to keep our budget smaller than this year and still accomplish the work that's got to be done. And.
We're going to be known as the longest yard lean, mean fighting machine.
Uh, yeah, we've been that way, Commissioner, we've been that way. I, I can tell you this, I can't cut anymore and get you the new construction and everything else we're required to get, I, it just can't be done. We will lose some of the revenue income if I do anything more out of that budget. So. Any other questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next on the hot seat is the treasurer's office.
I don't know, there was nothing in the email about it being a hot seat.
I was just getting ready to ask that question, how are we, are they both hot seat or?
I've been practicing Nancy Reagan's quote, just say no.
Well, good morning. So as the treasurer's office, you know that we collect all the revenue, we've looked, going through this budget, we've looked through all the, the trends on the economic environment, and when we submitted this information, it was the best to our knowledge. So I would like to know how you guys want to proceed, if you want me to go through line by line, or if you just want me to look at the big hitters, or how do you want to do that?
And, and just sort of an overlay because, you know, big hitters, what do you got? You're not asking for nothing, then you're okay.
I don't think we're asking for anything, so we're good to go?
Here we go.
All right, that was easy, we're going to break now.
So as, again, when we have the property tax, you know, we have no, we don't have anything to do with that, with that number, it's, comes from the assessor's office?
Yeah, we collect, but that number is based on last year's starting base point, new construction and all of that. And so it, it's a, it's a collective team worked with the assessor's office, but really the, the, the base number doesn't necessarily just come made up from us, we're the collecting portion, part of it, but.
So I have a question on that. We're looking at some very hard economic times for the farmers out there. What happens on properties that are, are tax failure collection? Who makes up, who makes up the difference of that, the other taxpayers?
So what, what are you saying?
Delinquent, if they don't pay their property taxes and we're counting on that money, how do we make that up?
Well, so then you have a, like, for instance, if you have a foreclosure after three years.
After three years, but in those three years, who makes up the difference?
Nobody, and, and, and so it evens out because there's always going to be about a 5% that you're not collecting as is, maybe that percent increases a little bit, but it's still, it's, it's budgeted money that's going to come in. It's just a cash flow timing of it now, right? If you're budgeting for it to come in in October, it doesn't come in in October because the payment isn't made, that money is still going to come in, whether it's next year or in three years when it goes up for foreclosure, that revenue is still coming, it's just a matter of from who and when.
Right.
Unless it goes to a foreclosure auction and doesn't sell, then it becomes tax title, and then that money doesn't come in at that point. But it's hard to imagine any piece of land with any value not selling at a foreclosure auction.
But what you're, what I'm talking about is in three years, Tim, how bad a shape can we be in if we start missing out on tax revenue?
But really, it's, it's already reached an equilibrium over time.
Yeah.
So that, so that the stuff that wasn't paid three years ago is being paid now, and the stuff that isn't paid now may be paid in three years, so it's really reached an equilibrium.
And we do it yearly, and so it's a three year, but yet each year we're selling property.
I'm anticipating a pretty bad year, so it may be higher this year than before.
And, and that's a very, sorry, that's a very sensitive topic, I understand, these are people livelihoods, this people's farms, but at the same time, people realize that unfortunately, if they don't pay, they're, they're, they're getting behind the A-ball even more. And so not very often that that occurs, there's always going to be, like I said, 4% to 5% that don't pay, and that's overall on the total collection. But it's hard to see that number increasing much more because that's people saying, okay, I know I'm essentially giving up on my land or on my farm or on my house, whatever it is, and that's very unfortunate, but I, I don't see those numbers going up much higher for the uncollectibles, but totally possible.
Hope you're right, Russ.
I, I hope so, I, it's, yeah.
So the one thing that we really try to do in our office is that in the foreclosure process, we start ahead of time, if people are like one year behind, we let those people know and we try to get them, because it means losing their home or their farm or, or whatever they have, and we're working with them and putting them on a payment plan, we're, and we're babysitting them, and so because we don't want to see anybody lose anything that they have worked so hard to get.
Thank you.
And yeah, to that, I mean, I want to give Josie credit for that, we meet with other treasurers, it's really rare that counties do that, and the way the RCW reads about the payment plans, it doesn't say that the county has to, it says the treasurer may work a payment plan. And those are big, and the reason those are big is one of the things about being delinquent on property taxes is that interest catches up to you really, really, really quick. Once you're delinquent, one month delinquent, which at one month, you're at 0.75%, it's that the interest isn't much, you could come into our office and say, hey, I'm in trouble, I want to get on the payment plan. We will put you on a contract, we will freeze that interest, and then we'll start collecting on a monthly basis that we could work out a contract on that, you know, that revenue, maybe it's not the full 5,000 coming in, but it's coming in at $800. It freezes that interest and it helps that person catch up or, you know, get, at least not get more far, further behind. And, you know, that, that does take a little bit more on the administrative side, but that's something that Josie has been more than willing to do, and I, I think it helps a lot of folks out, it really does. They still have to pay, but at least they're not getting in a bigger hole.
Again, I want to say thank you for doing that.
So just one more thing on that, too, it's a lot of treasurers in this, in the state have opted not to do that, as Russ said, and what they're doing is if anybody wants to pay whatever amount that they want to pay, they're letting them do that. But the problem is, is that it could linger on for however long they decide to pay or not pay.
And you don't freeze the interest rate, it keeps going up, right?
On those, on those properties. And so when we, when we make them come in and sign a contract and collect on a monthly basis, we are kind of guaranteeing that, that is going to be not over, hanging over their head, and yet the county's going to get their money.
And, and another thing, John just reminded us, and actually that's credit to the assessor's office more than us, is we do have folks that come in that are also behind, whether it's, you know, especially seniors, that they don't even know about that program, and we'll take them down to the assessor's office and, and they'll go back to three years and, and they'll help these folks out. And to your point, what do we do with that revenue, essentially it's revenue loss, but we have administrative refunds, that the way that works is that property tax loss that we take for that year, we're able to add that amount to the following year, and then that gets spread among everybody, but you're not losing out on that revenue, and it's helping those folks that maybe, you know, they don't have that, that income coming in, with their seniors or retired and don't have it, so.
To answer your commission, your question, Commissioner, as far as what, what could happen, I think you'd have to, and I wouldn't expect the treasurer's office to have this on the spot, but I think you'd have to go back to the last, you know, big dip in the economy to see what the potentials are. Look at, look at like 2008, 2009, when I know the county laid off a considerable number of staff, and I, I think you'd have to look back at a period of time like that to see what kind of an impact it had on collections of property tax.
We're looking, we're looking that way, I mean, you look at the price of gold and silver, it's through the roof, it's all-time highs, that's a sign that our currency ain't worth the paper it's printed on. So just saying, forewarning signs are out there.
Yeah, we agree, and, and another point to all this, too, one thing that we'll talk about this when we get to our penalty and interest on property tax, another thing that the state did during the COVID, is they reduced the interest and penalty on actual property taxes, so if you're delinquent, you're not paying as much fees, but that's a double-edged sword, it helps individuals out, but we were afraid that we were in such economy where interest rate is at four and a half, 5% versus your penalty is less than 1%. We were afraid that individuals, especially with higher tax bills, were going to use that money to invest, they could get more out of it and then pay their taxes late, and they're still ahead, but that hasn't been the case, which is, which is also good. People have been pretty, pretty good about paying their property taxes at least up to this point, we have not seen any trends that say otherwise, but that could change.
Okay, so we want to start on property tax?
So I mean, we think we went through that quite a bit, I think the next thing would be the sales tax.
The sales tax, I'm sorry, do you want to pull that up?
I don't know if you guys want me to, I, I kind of worked up a little sheet that I looked at for property taxes, I think Tim maybe does, or not property taxes, sorry, sales tax. If I plug this in, will that take me right to it? I, I think this is probably one of the biggest revenue sources outside of property taxes and the most unpredictable where on property taxes, you know exactly what you're budgeting for. You know exactly what you're budgeting for, and you know exactly where things stand versus sales tax, there's so much that goes into it. It's how the economy is doing, it's if there is any projects out in the county, if people have money to spend or not. We saw when people received stimulus checks that the sales tax went up. The last year in 2025, it's been no secret that, that has started a downward trend. And so what we've been doing with sales taxes, there's three ways to look at it, in my opinion. We, we took the data from the past five years and we looked at trends for growth year to year and how the sales tax patterns hold. And so looking at the 2025 sales tax, there's, the, the big question is, have we bottomed out or is the downward trend going to continue? So there's three different numbers you could budget, and that's really going to come down to the board, administrator and finance director. You could look at it from a conservative standpoint, say, okay, there's probably going to be a little to no, no growth or 1% growth, you could look at it at a moderate growth at 4%, or you could look at it optimistic growth at 8%. And based on what this board feels is the appropriate budget for next year, that's how you would get to your budgeted number. For the purpose of, the way we approach this is we are always pretty conservative with the number, we, we budgeted for a 1% growth at 7.6 million dollars for 2026 for sales tax. Of course, based on my opinion and my looking at that, you could, you could argue that 2025 was an off year, every single year we saw growth on average of about 10%. And then 2025 has been an outlier, so possibly that number goes back up considerably next year, or possibly we're in an economical, economical state where that number isn't growing. So that is really where, you know, forecasting becomes difficult because somebody's going to have to look at it and say, hey, this is the route we're going to go, and we're going to live with the consequences one way or another. And. Yeah, if you guys have any questions or want me to go any further into this, so you got the three columns here for 2026, and these account for the 1%, moderate growth 4%, and the optimistic growth 8%. And at, at the time we submitted it, we submitted at 1% growth from 2025.
I think you're smart.
I wouldn't go say that. Any questions about sales tax, or we're good to move on?
Could you, could you just speak to, I know back early on that we, growth was off 15% month over month, what, what is that year over year at this point?
So from 2024 to 2025, and this doesn't have the last two months of accurate numbers as it was forecasted numbers, I think the numbers actually came in even a little bit lower, but we were negative 5.5% from last year, so it's a 5% drop.
It's down 7.82% right now.
It's even more.
362,000 off from last year.
Yeah, so I, and then, yeah, as I mentioned, I did this two, three months, so that has the more accurate data where the numbers were coming in even lower than I was forecast.
And that's, and that's March through September?
12 months over 12 months.
Yep. And again, if you, but then you look at the six years, you know, I don't, this is where it becomes challenging because you look over the six years, we had a dip in 2023, and that was the one outlier year. So even if you look over the 15 years history of Franklin County, it's really rare that we have an off year like we're having right now, and it almost always recovers the following year. But again, we don't have a crystal ball to look at and say, this is going to happen for a fact, we hope that that's the trend, that's been the trend. If we had a negative year, almost certainly the next year has been positive, but I cannot say that for sure.
Okay, so I'm going to move to 101 on the pilt. So we're going to go down the pilt, I'm just going to hit the big ones here.
Are we current on our pilt from the?
They are budgeted and paid.
They have, good.
So, but on the PUD privilege pilt, we received our money in March, and so we're current on that, but then they actually pulled back money from there, the state did, in June. So, and we are.
The state pulled back money?
Mm-hmm, by RCW, we states that we need to pay the cities and fires districts what they have used over that past year and a percentage, and so then the county gets what's less, what's left from that amount that we paid to those districts and cities. So they pulled back about $53,000 and so the county hit, got the hit on that one.
The state can do that.
Well, it's hasn't happened before. And so the associations are looking into it.
I would hope so.
They are. It's a big topic for every county. We have a pretty big hit. King County, Pierce County and those other counties aren't happy about it either because their hit is, you know, much, much bigger. And the bigger counties do have a bigger hit.
Benton County got a big hit.
But, but the issue is before, it's also like the way they budget at the state. Their budget isn't at the end of the year like ours is. I think it's in the middle of the year, June. And so essentially what they do is they forecast based on, based on calculations. Well, when their budget is short, they're able to just cut it and then take the money back. And so they sent the money out before they actually approved a budget for the following fiscal year. And then we have to allocate that money to all the jurisdictions based on the the RCW and it tells you, you know, based on the levy rate. And once we allocate the money to the jurisdictions, two, three months after the fact, they say, okay, well, we don't have the budget to pay you this amount. And they just pull it back. And the way they pull it back is they don't send you a bill. The following month, when they're sending you your sales tax, they just send less that amount. So you really have no way of withholding a payment or doing anything. They just don't send you your money the next time around. They
You have a negative budget on some of the things. And then, and the PUD privilege, it wasn't the only ones. We got hit with some other ones. They were smaller, which they amounted up to about 13. Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. They were amounted up to about $13,000, the smaller ones that were hit also with that.
It was like liquor excise and some of those ones. There was like a thousand to 2,000, which it was pretty minimal on the overall budget where I, you know, it wasn't necessarily concerning it averages out, but the PUD one, you definitely felt 33,000.
When you add those with the PUD, then it was like a $60,000 hit.
I think the next big topic of conversation that always comes up on our budget is investment interest. I could talk a little bit about that one. I don't know if there was anything in between that I skipped over. Feel free to stop me and go back. I think investment interest is another one that's fairly interesting and quite honestly, can be hard to forecast because there's just so much unknown. Just basics of it, the way investment interest works or the way we receive money, it's not that the county has a lot of money to invest, but we're able to invest residual cash. Cash that's kind of in the middle of not being used by other districts. And so there's two things that goes into investment interest. I know, I know you guys know that, but just, you know, to, to remind that. It's the money that's kind of on hold, not being used. And then it's the investment rates being good. Those are the two main factors that drive our investment income. If we don't have one or the other, investment interest will not be great, no matter how good you are or how bad your investment. Those two factors are the biggest key factors. Currently, our overall residual cash has been high due to several different funds not using their cash or not using their cash immediately. Point oh nine being a big one and mental health being another one. And so because of that, we're able to take that money, we're able to invest some of that. But now we're looking at a second thing that's occurring. I'm sure you guys all saw on the news, the recent push for rate cut and the Fed. That started to occur now. We've received our first 25 basis point cut in September. Now there's a forecast that there's going to be a cut anywhere between one more cut to seven more cuts within the next 12 months. So for the purpose of this exercise and the forecast, to say that there are seven cuts coming, I think that's pretty aggressive. To say there is one cut cutting, I think that's pretty optimistic. So what we did and the way I looked at it is I worked in into our forecast for rate cuts within the next 12 months. I think that's somewhere in the middle. And so based on the four rate cuts and based on our average daily balance and our residual, we tried to forecast how much we could generate an investment interest. And so that's kind of how we came up with our totals for investment interest. And we split our investment interest into three different categories. We have bonds that we purchase, which, which are pretty straightforward. These bonds are already on the books. We're getting coupon payments for them outside of them being called where a few of them might be, but they're minimal. We're pretty confident that, hey, this revenue for the, for the bonds is coming in. And I think that was at 200. Let me see where my number was. That was at about 200 and something thousand here.
Are you going off of those two figures up there, about 206,000?
No. So, so the, the bonds are not in here. The bonds, what I'm getting at was the bonds are, you don't even have to work anything in here because you know what your payments are.
But these are showing reductions. You're bringing in an
These here are the other two investment lines we have. So then another thing we're doing with our investments is we have investments that we, that are not locked in and like a bond in a three to five year, whether it's money market, whether it's CDs, whether it's the LGIP. And so this is what these account for. And this is fluid because that rate could literally change every single day, just depending on what the market is doing. And so here is where I have the, the rate worked in. I'm trying to forecast what the current Fed rate is, which currently it's about 4.25. Depends where you look, four, four to 4.25, high end four, five, but that's pretty much gone. And so I'm working in a 25 basis point every quarter and generating based on what our daily balance would be and trying to forecast our monthly investment interest. And so between the two, these are the totals that we are forecasting to, to receive. So we're still projecting to get somewhere around $2 million in investment interest, which, you know, in my opinion, that's still great. But again, those numbers could easily change. If the market drops, fails, something crazy happens, you can invest money that doesn't have a return. If the money in residual gets used, that's another big factor.
Or districts.
Or districts start investing more of their questions, comments. I know I'm going through this maybe a little too quick. I could drill in as much as you guys want to. I just don't want to get too much into the weeds.
That's helpful. What's our, our daily, I don't know if, if you look at it on daily or weekly rate of what we, we have to invest? Is that 100 million?
Zero. Have to invest for our county?
Not have to. What do we, what do we have available to invest on an average?
Okay, yeah. So, so the way it works is we're investing for everybody. So our total portfolio is nowhere, somewhere around 240 million dollars. Out of that 240 million dollars.
That's what, that was my question.
But that's the overall portfolio. For the county, what the county is getting in interest, roughly 40 million dollars. The other 200 is going to the schools, ports and whatnot.
Yeah. But, but that's what the portfolio is, 240 available, which is what you're getting these from.
Yep. And that, that helps a lot too, because that gives us more power. The more money you have, the more attractive stuff you'll get because brokers want to work with you. You know, if you have $20,000 in your account right now and you go into an American, you try to ask them to give you a four percent money market, they'll tell you to have a nice day. But you come in with 200 million dollars, they'll talk. And so, you know, that, that's
Of that 240 million though, you can't invest all that. Like you said, if they make a call on that money, you got to have it there for them.
Yeah. So it's, it is all invested. That's what's invested. But out of that 240, 200 of it is invested on behalf of the district. So if the districts want it to be divested, they have to let us know in advance. For example,
That one is liquid.
How long, how, how soon do they, how much time would we have if they made a call on it?
So it depends how much they want to divest. If the school needs every single dollar tomorrow, then they would probably take a loss in some of their interest. Because like, for example, if you have a bond that you've purchased and if you have to, if you have to get the cash for the bond today, you'd have to sell it or whatever the current market is. However, overall, our portfolios weighted where we could divest everything in about five to seven days, based on one covering the other. But if everybody came in and called for cash today, then there would be a hit to interest collected. They would lose out of their, their interest.
Yeah, that, that's helpful. You answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. Danzel?
My question was more like on the diversity of investments. So you were talking about certificate of deposits and I just was curious, how, what, how much are we doing that and that? And how much is in the state pool? Where are you? How diversified are we?
Yeah. So we actually have a financial investment policy that kind of dictates what we could put where. So out of the residual cash, that's really what the county interest is. About 25% of that, we're putting into, into long-term investments, which would be like bonds, securities, treasuries and things like that. And then the other 70% is, is liquid. Out of that 70, about half of it is in staple and the other half is between different banks, depending on the money market rates, depending on the CD rates and stuff like that.
Any more questions?
So on our, our, the only thing that we are asking for is an increase is our tuition for expenses.
Do you have a slide on that for what your increases?
Yeah, I have a tuition request. So for the tuition request, I believe about two, three years ago, we changed how the process works. It's no longer under the, and correct me if I'm wrong. That's how I understood it. It's no longer under the actual department budget. Each department submits what they would like to submit for, but then it goes under a I wasn't sure if it was non-departmental or
No, it's still in, it's still in
Oh, it's still in the department? Okay. Cause I thought it was a fund that everybody kind of pulls out of and then when it's dry, it's dry.
I, I think the way it was talking, I think the way it was written, it just comes up from contingency, but there's more, there's more leniency as far as when requests can come in now. That was, I think, the main, main change that was made to it was that it didn't, before there was deadlines, like it had to be submitted before September, October or something. And now that deadline isn't, isn't there anymore. It's, it's, people can come in at any time of the year for requests.
And so what we're, what we put in for the request for the tuition, we have three individuals that are currently working towards their BA in our office. Two of our positions are entry level positions. We've talked about in the past that are pretty hard to recruit for because they are, the pay isn't, isn't much. And so that's been one of our tools that we've utilized is, hey, come here, work here, we'll help you guys. The union contract allows them to submit for, for that. If the board approves for the funds, we'll help you get some education. Then you work for us. I think they're required to work a year after they graduate or else they have to pay back the funds. And so that's been a, that's been a tool that we've utilized in the past. And I will say that every time we submit this, that's the max amount that would be spent if they went every quarter based and, and got a B or higher in every class and maxed out every credit they can. So far, I have never even come close to spending anything over 60% of what we submitted because there's always a quarter off or they take one less class because working a full-time job, going to full-time school becomes a challenge. But we always try to submit at least to show the full maximum potential amount of all three individuals that are eligible, go to school full-time, full year. And so that's what that number would look like.
And, and what is that tool? I can't read it.
Sorry, that's 28,576 between the, between the three.
Can, can we even do that though, legally speaking? I don't, I don't think we can, right?
To the one year?
One year.
I think it's written in the contract or it was, but I don't know how we would. Yeah. No, I, I, I can't speak. Unfortunately, we have not had that happen yet and everybody that we've paid been here, but you're probably correct. I don't know how we would.
Well, considering I'm sitting in Jeff Briggs' spot right now.
Be very careful. I'll start asking you questions.
Alrighty, is that it?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Thanks for all the good info. Good work, Russ, Josie. And next we have the district court. Mr. Roscoe, Kelly Fields.
Everything check out alright, but we certainly can't talk.
Not good.
The chairman said earlier that those are the hot seats, so I'm just, I'm just saying.
Well,
Be aware.
That's good because she's cold. I don't think, yeah, I'm cold today, so maybe that'll be helpful.
Be afraid, be very afraid.
It does feel like we're in the principal's office right now.
Good.
Well, that wasn't the response I was hoping for. We're not very exciting like everyone else who's presented today. We have a number of budgets. Mainly district courts budget. And I think we're pretty on track. We're looking at, the only request we have here is an increase in dues request. I think it's $300 and that's just because they've increased it. We can't do anything about it. Other than that, we've kept everything fairly similar. One of the issues we've had recently was a decrease in some of the filings for infractions, which obviously decreases the amount of revenue. But we're not income generating, so we can only do so much about that. That really has to do with the number of individuals being stopped and cited. And those numbers are down. But our civil filings have gone up. So interestingly enough, we have the exact same numbers at the same time from last year to this year.
Same numbers, just different sources.
Exactly. And we, our, our civil numbers have gone up, which is, I guess, helpful in that we've increased our ex parte fees for signing. They take a lot more time than they did before. So I'm having to go through a number of different systems to review those. But because we have access to an e-filing system, we've had a number of more civil default judgments filed. So that's kind of helped to keep things equal. Probation is working on a bare bones budget right now. We're trying to obviously keep that as low as possible as well. One of the issues has been work crew, which we're getting back up and going. We had an individual here, an attempt employee working throughout the summer. But he went back to his position at the school district. So now he's working, training somebody else who can take over and get that going. That does impact obviously the work crew budget, but also was it public works? The grant for public works. So there's a grant through public works that allows that. And we're up north picking up, you know, just dump sites and so forth that are really kind of impacting our county. So whenever you drive by and you see one, you can let us know and we could, we could head out there. Fortunately, the new person that we have working is the son of a farmer and he's very aware of the up north sites. So he was excited to start getting those going.
I seen him pulling out this morning, headed out when I was getting here. So.
See garbage or something like that, we'll call you.
Illegal dump sites. Don't call me.
People dumping on
Email maybe. Please go to this. No, thank you. I don't have enough time for that.
That's a real question though. Where, who, who would we connect?
Get ahold of the work crew. You could maybe email. I can give you his email address or
Yes, we'll get you the information. There's actually
Our solid waste is different than anywhere else in the state. We don't have a our, our waste program is run out of
So Erdman would be the one.
We do have in the probation budget, a request for increase to IS of $2,000. We are having to pay IS more right now. There's a lot of information there. I guess this stays within the county, but we do need to pay that department out of our budget for therapeutic courts. I think we've kind of modified it a little bit. It's all fully grant funded, but the amount that received is a little bit higher. So we're going to include that in and we're going to update that. And I think Kelly had a question about how to do that.
There was a few things. Do you want me just to email them to you then take?
That'd be good.
Okay. It's, it's more money. It's not less. So it's not anything that you guys should be upset about. Trial court improvement, simply that, there's a portion of my salary that gets paid to the county for district and superior to use for issues that we need for improvement. It's my understanding that there was recently an update to one of the listening systems and that was paid out of trial court improvement. There's nothing that we can pull to the county, but we can help maintain courtrooms and other issues that we have with that. We have the opioid settlement that we have used very sparingly. But we do use at a certain point, there was CJTA funding that was received through the state that goes to Greater Columbia Behavioral Health and then is transferred out to merit. Their funding was reduced and I don't know by the amounts. It's hard to get some answers sometimes. But there was an amount due at the end of last year for the UAs. So we ended up having to pay them out of the opioid to maintain those UAs. I think that's it. I'm looking at the case cap numbers. If you guys want to see those, we can see how many cases were filed in each line item that we have. I don't know if there's any questions you have. We try to keep it very limited. We don't spend much at training. I, I don't believe our probation has gone to training in a number of years. They're looking at hopefully going this year. We do have a new probation officer, not new to probation, but just she'd like to get in and get some additional training. And with the changes in laws, we think it's really appropriate. They have taken advantage of a lot of the online training available to them. That's for free, but sometimes we can't find free training. So this year we may be looking at sending them off. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Yes, Mr. Danzel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just kind of something to point out for you gentlemen. When the judge came in here and wanted to utilize some of the mental health sales tax, actually cleared up some funds for, you had a current expense to use in other places. actually cleared up some funds for, he had a current expense to use in other places. I just didn't think that you had mentioned that, and I think that you deserve to mention that, and that also, that helps out the county when that happens, so, thank you.
Thank you.
It does, and, and as I mentioned, I will continue updating the salaries and benefits as, as the budget process goes on, post-workshop. And so, like, that change that was just recently made hasn't been reflected in the numbers that we have right now. So there's 20% of the salaries and benefits that will be coming from the mental health fund, and so that'll reduce the cost to current expense. And so the, so ultimately, benefits to current expenses, I haven't reflected yet in the numbers that we're working with.
Tim, what are we looking at for, I know it's on the decline of that mental health sales tax. What are we looking at per year? What's coming in on that 1%, right? 1%, 1/10 of 1%? That is, how much? Because I know our tax is going down, revenues are going down. Is it seeing?
And, and some of the, some of the sales tax revenues are more consistent than others. There, there's, and I can't necessarily speak to all of the drivers as far as, but like, some of the criminal justice ones are more consistent. They're, they don't have the highs and lows that other, other ones do and stuff. And I think the mental health may be one of those that's more, more consistent. But, I mean, so we received $3,128,000 in, in 2024. And, and, yeah, I mean, it, it does vary quite a, quite a bit. I mean, it went from 229, I mean, I see 279 in there. This one has three different months in it, because we, the, the months, January and February are collected for the previous year. So it gets accrued back, and that's why that number's high there. But 2025 so far, we've already collected 1.7 million so far this, this year. 200 plus, 250,000 average maybe each, each month that we're getting in there. I mean, the fund itself has...
Are we on pace for that 3.1 again, or decline, just like we're talking about?
I, I would, I would have to, I, I might, I think I have it somewhere, but I'd have to, I'd have to dig around a little bit.
Guru, I did, that I thought you were.
I'd have to, I'd have to, I, I think I have it, but I'd have to dig around a little bit.
So basically, that 1/10 to 1% is generating 3 million a year?
Yep.
Yep.
I thought it was higher than that, so.
Right, right now, we've got about almost 12 million in the fund right now.
And I, well, if we're asking questions about that, does that include the 5 million paid to Benton County for the improvements, or does that?
That's...
Was that in addition to?
I don't think, I don't think there's been anything paid yet.
I know that it was approved, so I was just wondering if we were working with 12 or working... Got it.
Right. It's been allocated, just has not, the check hasn't been written.
Correct. I don't, I don't, my recollection is it hasn't been paid yet.
So it appears that pretty, fairly accurately, we can, we can say that a 10th, 1/10 of 1% in Franklin County collects roughly 3 million a year.
Yep.
So the transit portion would be?
6/10, 18 million a year.
And I'd just be a little careful with some of those numbers, just because, once again, some, they're on different bases. They're on, they're collecting on different things sometimes and stuff, and so you really have to know what it's collected on, and sometimes it's not apples to apples when you're talking 0.1% and 0.1%. And, and so I'd just be a little careful, careful. I'd, I'd check with the experts on sales tax collection, you know, on, on some of those projections.
So a quick question on that. I see the, I read something where the city of Pasco is talking about putting a 1/10 to 1% tax on for their, I don't know what they're going to use it for, but I, I read it yesterday. I'm like, well, do they, do they have the authority to be a taxing district, or does that have to come before us? They can?
The city?
Within the city.
Within the city.
So I, I want to make sure that I clarify something I said. That was not accurate, what I said about 18 million on the transit. The reason that can't be accurate is because the transit tax is not collected countywide. It is only in the transit benefit area. So that would not be 3 million per year, per 1/10 of 1%. So I don't know what that number is now, but that would not be 3 million a year on 1/10. Because that's, that's a county-wide thing, which the mental health tax would be a county-wide thing. So I don't know what the, the transit collection would be, but it would not be the same.
Mr. Danzel.
One thing on this that I think is a wise move too, to tap into some, like, a dedicated fund, like the mental health sales taxes, just with how transitionary mental health in general's been by this state. When you first started, we were probably still operating out of regional support networks. That's all gone away. So, and also, and I think the judge had pointed this out at a previous, at a previous hearing, the, you couple that, kind of like the regional support network model that we went from, and the way that the superior, or the Supreme Court handles OPD mandates now. I think the case, the state in general's going to be softer on crime, and so there's going to be more of a need for this in the future. I don't see it going away anytime soon. So the idea that we're already kind of setting a precedent that we're going to collect some of that sales tax, mental health use sales tax, and, and utilize it in a therapy court, I think is a very good, wise use of that, because some of the other funding might go away, but I don't think that the, I really don't think that the therapy court funding and all those are. I think that's going to stay intact for at least the next four to eight, 10, 12 years.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you guys want to, we're on schedule to take a break at 10:50, but we can move right into the clerk's office if you'd like to.
I'm good.
We're ready for the clerk's office. Welcome. Come on in. The seats are hot.
Well, I think I ate most of the last one, so.
You know I can't eat that stuff. So Mr. Killian won't be able to make it?
I'm sorry, Mr. Killian's out of the office, so we're here to represent him. This is the clerk's financial manager, Connie Rhodes. And we're here to answer any questions you have about our budgets. What we have is pretty straightforward and static. We can start with the 160. Some of the main points in our 160 is the DSHS grant hasn't changed. We'll be receiving $184,000, $154,560 from federal, and state is $29,440. We have other income with regard to municipal court jury trials. We do get reimbursed there. We take in filing fees. We have a non-mandated income for passport. Passports were at this year about $98,000 that we have brought in, and we anticipate $134,000 in revenue next year. We also have another main source of revenue for us is the copy fees portal, audio recorded request, supporting the public with transparency. And then, of course, we have fees, fines, and wage assignments that we collect.
Would you please speak into the mic? I can't hardly hear you. Thank you.
So with the passport increase, is that because our driver's licenses in Washington State aren't worth nothing anymore?
Beg your pardon?
Well, you're getting an increase in passports. Is that because our driver's licenses in Washington State have been, I guess, not as worthy for travel as the passport, or are people going overseas? Or are we getting more people flying over, over?
More people are leaving.
Over the pond, huh? Wow.
Yeah, I think you're right, that they do feel safer to have that passport, so.
And our driver's license.
We've seen an increase in passport revenue over the last few years. Is there any questions I can answer about the 160?
No big increases, no, no ass?
Um, no, no.
We thank you. We thank you.
We do have some decreases in our expenditures in the 160. We had some good legislative news with House Bill 1205. We had been tasked with paying for advertising and publications for juvenile, for the juvenile publications. They have to go into the paper, and so that bill shifted the cost to the petitioner. So we reduced our budget by $5,000 for that reason. Our dues and subscriptions have decreased $1,800 due to an increase they put on the WASAC annual dues, so we opted out of those to save the county this year. We have a little bit of a travel increase due to conference locations. And then, Tim, I need to work with you on the increase we asked for on the rentals and leases. It turns out our copy machine didn't cost as much as we anticipated, so that $200 increase is no longer.
Okay. So that can just be removed?
Yes. As far as workload, we anticipate jury mileage to go up a little bit this year. Working with court administration, they have amended their trial schedule, or their schedule for all the dockets and trials to try to push out more trials next year. So we do anticipate a little bit of extra costs there, but nothing that we're concerned about. And that's pretty much it for the 160. No requests for staff. We're doing fine.
You make life easy.
We try to. We try to. We're just chugging right along. Can I answer any questions, gentlemen?
Questions?
No questions for me.
We can move, we can move on to the 116 with, which is our courthouse facilitator budget. Our courthouse facilitator is just a, is contracted for mandated assistance to pro se litigants on domestic dockets, and then for public assistance by appointment only at a nominal cost, so people can come in for $35 and talk with Michelle to make sure they have their paperwork in order, which saves time in court for the judicial officer. There's no increase for her professional service fee for next year, and we did have a very small IS one-time $51 increase. So there's really nothing to, of concern on that budget. Any questions?
Questions, commissioners? Mr. Danzel? No questions.
All right. Our next budget is the 117, which is LFO collections. We do have a state grant. What was, that is static. It was $10,140 last year, and it remains $10,000, $10,140 this year. In 2027, it's projected to be $8,111.
Questions?
No questions here.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Danzel. Ruby, thank you so much. It's always a pleasure to go up into your office. But the other thing too is, is that this is a, this is kind of like one of the biggest, they don't really know. It all depends on if, if cases come to them, if, if there's juries that are called, if certain actions are filed. And so the clerk's budget's always one of the biggest, you know, unknowns because of that reasons.
It's difficult to forecast.
Thank you.
And we appreciate everything you do up there. You guys do a great job.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any questions, anything else we can help with? All right. Thank you very much.
Just tell Mike we'd much rather meet with you two than him.
We will be sure to tell him that. Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so do we want to go through, Brian, are you going to do human services?
Uh, human, yeah, resources.
Human resources?
So...
Can we take a couple-minute break? Just a bathroom break real quick?
Yeah, yeah, we can take, well, let's take a five-minute break.
Mr. Danzel? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Questions, Commissioner?
Just to comment on the copier lease, we get some pretty good deals here at the counter, at the county. I lease the same thing from the same organizations and it costs me quite a bit more. So, we get good pricing here at the county.
All right.
And then there's the disability board as well. Looks like only decreases on the disability board. They're removing the travel and removing the registration costs. Bring those both down to zero. So a net decrease over all the requesting of $2,500. Everything else staying the same. Looks like there hasn't been any activity in recent years on the travel or registration.
For the most part, the disability board is just whatever reimbursements we receive throughout the year. So it can fluctuate, but there's no major expensive like travel or registrations or training for that budget.
Any other questions, comments, Commissioner?
Just as you've said, just appreciate that there's not big ask.
Yeah. It's a tight year, gonna be a very tight year. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry I can't speak much for the HR budget, but...
You did great.
Any other questions? I'll try my best.
I think it's pretty clear cut. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So at this time, I guess we'll recess to lunch and come back at 1 o'clock. I don't think we can move that up, but we'll come back at 1 o'clock and it'll be the sheriff and then corrections. So at this time, we'll recess to 1 o'clock.
We do have 30 seconds.
Where am I?
Okay. So they're going to reschedule that then?
Correct.
Okay. They said it was really important. Oh. Okay, it's one o'clock. We restart the meeting here, the workshop. And first up is the Sheriff's Department. And I see Monty's here. So you lead the way.
All right, so...
Okay, Commissioner Mullen will be here in a minute.
Would you please talk into your mics carefully? I struggle here and most of the time.
Yeah, no worries.
Thank you.
So I guess, I'm not sure where we want to start with all the...
Just start with the big stuff?
We could, we handed out a summary of some of the happenings that we're asking for. So I guess we could start there with the, the first one being the staffing request for court security deputies. So as we've, we've gotten into the, providing the court security, we've discovered that there's a much greater need than for deputies than one person can provide. So that's why we're asking for additional two bodies. And in the absence of the one, we're, we're having to pay overtime to bring deputies in to cover that position. So that part of it's having an obvious impact on our overtime budget as well.
Okay. Any questions? So far.
So the, the other ask is for the, and we've talked about it before, with the support specialist position. And just the expanded workload with the support staff in the office with public records. The, the warrant responsibilities, the current workload. And not getting it done in a timely manner could, could be a potential liability for the county, especially with the public disclosure requests. So some of the other responsibilities, the payroll of the building, concealed weapons permits, warrant entry. Anything else for your folks there? Entertained questions for the support specialists?
Any questions?
Would you just talk through that a little bit further? Based on what I'm reading here in your, in your handout. It would, it would appear that if this workload shifted from the jail to the Sheriff's Department, in your opinion, would that then reduce the need in the, in the corrections? Or how does that, where does that, that land from a workload stand, standing?
So maybe you could speak to it.
It's already been transferred to us. We're already doing warrants and summons, everything that you have here, we've already taken over.
I recognize that, but that's a...
But I'm not sure exactly how they're dispersing their job duties down there because I don't...
I'm just trying to understand, understand that because warrants are a statutory requirement of the Sheriff's Office. So had they been transferred into the jail?
When I first started, we were doing them in dispatch. So inclusive with the Sheriff's Office, wherever they land, they landed with the jail after they took them from our dispatch. And then once the jail was taken over, then obviously they had to come to us because, as you said, RCW.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a...
Yeah, I'd like to better understand.
Yeah, so everybody, they'd call it a takeover. So when the Department of Corrections was formed, the way that I understand it is that there were six administrative positions. Three were being paid out of, or pardon me, four were being paid out of corrections. Two were being paid out of the Sheriff's Budget. But in reality, in actuality, three were doing the role of warrant work for the sheriff. So it was, the way I look at it is, is that you were paying, incorrectly paying for work to be done out of corrections for the Sheriff's Department. And so that's where the whole thing comes down to where we don't agree on how many full-time employees there are. And, but the split was four-two, and I think that you can attest to that.
For the, that's for the sheriff's support specialists?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to look back at the numbers to verify that.
We have three in the Sheriff's Office. We have two that are paid out of the 520 and the one that's paid out of our sex offender grant. We haven't had a new support specialist since, I believe, 1997, actual full-time employee that was granted by the commissioners.
That's right.
So trying to, trying to weave through that, it would be your contention that, that the workload shifted to the Sheriff's Office out of the jail? And so, okay, thank you.
There you are. Are you there, right? There's two sheriffs.
So two in, two in sheriff currently and...
Yeah, one's paid out of the sex offender grant.
And six in, in corrections.
And this is what I, this is where there's...
You're going to have to, when you talk about 512, I don't have any, any concept of what that means. So you're going to have to speak in English for me. I'm sorry.
I didn't say five.
No, I was just saying that you guys are talking in code that I don't, you're talking in a world that I don't work in, so I have no idea what, what we're talking about.
The 520 is the Sheriff's Budget and the 540 is the corrections budget.
Got it.
And I think one or, one or two of these may be split with the commissary fund as well. But, but ultimately, the commissary ones would still be corrections-based, I guess, or whatever. And there's, looks like there's six of those and two, two on the sheriff's side.
I think if you look back historically, there was two part-time commissary folks that was combined into one position. I think that's how that went.
So I guess a question for you, Brian. So we had six positions and that we're trying to add, wanted, we're trying to go from six to seven, from what was to what the request is today. Okay.
If there's no questions or comments, we'll move on.
I have just one question. When you took over the court security dates in 2023, who was doing it before?
It's been the same guy since then.
Before then?
Oh, court security?
Yeah.
Corrections.
And that was done because they couldn't carry firearms?
Not without the Sheriff's approval.
Oh, the bailiffs were armed at one time and then they, the law changed and they couldn't no longer be armed because of the training requirements and the liability part of it, so when that...
The sheriff had to give him authority to carry the weapons and he declined it.
Correct, yes.
He declined it.
Yeah.
So back on that, so this is a request for two additional FTEs for a total of three FTEs inside the courthouse. So we're currently, one person is doing that with overtime. And so we're asking for three for the same position?
We currently have one guy in the courthouse, but there's been a need for District Court to have a person more often than we can provide. And then also, we, a lot of times, there's three courtrooms going at the same time. So what the current guy is doing is just running around between all the courtrooms, trying to be a presence, and he obviously can't cover them all. In his absence, that's when we pay the overtime.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
Okay, let's move on.
Going into operational requests, small tools and equipment, there's no change to that. We just use those fundings to ballistic vests and riot gear and replacement handguns and rifles.
This is the same request from the last year?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on this operational request?
Just a minute, I'm going down through it. This SmartForce, is this the same thing that we funded here a little while back?
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
In my little notes, it's unclear if it goes in our budget or IS budget because in the resolution, it says out of our budget for the next payment. Yeah, so...
So did we not budget it in 2025? And that's why we just passed it here a little while back?
Right, and so then the next payment will be for '26 and '27. But in the resolution, it did say for us to put it out of our budget. I think me and Tim talked about this and we weren't sure with the resolution.
We did. I do know that IS included it. I know we haven't had the IS session yet, but they did include it in their budget as well.
So if we want IS to take it, we can easily take it out. We just didn't want to get missed.
We just got confirmation that Bo budgeted that through IS.
Okay, it is my opinion that it would make sense that all IS-type things go into the IS department. That's my opinion. I don't know how we do that, but I think that that's the most proper thing.
No, I agree with you. We just, because of the resolution said Sheriff's Office, we didn't want to miss it.
So that being the case, would we, we would put an X through this in the Sheriff's Budget?
Yes, we can.
So that is within IT?
So Tim, what about this computer BI-PIN? Same with it? Is that IS too?
No, I don't think so. That's, I think they could speak to it better, but it's fees that we pay to another agency, I believe.
That's our records management system. It comes out of our funding. And we were told by IS, I believe it was Michael, that went around and let us know that it's going to be raised. He wasn't sure exactly what the amount was before budget.
Do you know what our budget was last year for this?
$33,523.
Marcus knows exactly what it is.
It was the BI-PIN board voted to add a new software system and it's approximately going to be our portion.
Says data storage for RMS.
Yeah.
So this is going from $33,525 to $50 for that new software? So this is an additional 50. This is up to the 50.
Yeah, it's approximately what our share will be.
The way this is entered right now, this would be an additional 50. So it'd be a total of $83,523.
So we're going from $33,500 to $83,500.
I don't know if that's right or not. I might have entered that wrong.
So that's the way it's written here?
I think it would be, well, it's been a while.
We can verify those numbers and if it needs to be adjusted, we can make the changes.
Well, on mine, it says I added $33,523 to make it a total of 50. On, sorry, must've done something there or...
Okay, yeah, if you want just 50, it should be essentially $17,000 in the request column because you start with 33.
Is it 50 total?
For the new peregrine system, for our share.
Additional?
Additional on top of any increases that BI-PIN would do. Cost of doing business increases.
That is correct then.
Increase from $33,500 to $50,000. That makes more sense.
On the handguns and rifles under small tools and equipment, did everything that was taken from the jail get returned to the jail?
That's my understanding. You're talking about handguns?
Talking about handguns.
Tasers.
Tasers, everything that they took out of the jail.
There was no tasers taken, but the handguns that were taken were returned, yes.
They just handguns?
Just handguns.
And all of them?
Yes.
All 40?
All the handguns.
It's my understanding we're six short still, but Corrections will be here next on our agenda so we can ask that question.
All right, thank you.
If there was any shortage, that would have been ones that were never issued.
Well, if they were inventoried in the jail, they got to be somewhere.
Everything that was taken from the jail was returned to the jail.
Everything.
It never left the same, it was all on the same cart. So that whole cart got transferred back. I'm not sure what the six is.
What about, what about stuff like taser cartridges and that type of stuff that wasn't taken but are not, they're not compatible with the ones that the Sheriff's Office uses? Has all that been given to Corrections?
I don't believe any of that stuff has been given anywhere, no.
Okay.
Are we good with, up to the next page where it's sheriff vehicles?
Yes, I think I understand.
So the request for sheriff vehicles is, I wasn't sure. I know last year, there was money that was allocated to Public Works for the purchase of our vehicles, but I don't know if that's going to be the case moving forward. So that's why it's in there now.
I thought last year, they bought the vehicle before it was approved.
We had to approve it after it was bought.
I think the vehicle you're referring to, I think that's the Chevy pickup. Is that, that was, that was part of the additional request for a FTE? And the pickup cost was part of the quote for the position.
And wasn't one of the vehicles taken from the jail involved in an accident right after it was taken and totaled?
We did have a vehicle that was hit on I-182 that belongs to one of our detectives.
But it didn't belong to the jail?
I think Jansky drove it for a couple of weeks.
Can you speak to the vehicles that are currently being brought in right now? Where are they in relationship to this capital request that we have on this paper in front of us?
So the vehicles, the five vehicles that are coming in currently were purchased with the monies that was placed in Public Works' budget last year or for this year.
So they've already, they was budgeted by Public Works and purchased through Public Works?
So we made the request last year for...
About the same?
About the same. And I believe 275 was put into Public Works' budget to purchase five vehicles.
There was $350,000 that was budgeted and I don't think there's been anything that's been transferred yet. Not to say they couldn't have, couldn't, I mean, they could spend before they get it, but there hasn't been anything transferred yet to them. And at one point, I think Craig was saying they need probably closer to $500,000. Or, that may not have been just entirely for sheriff vehicles. It may have been just countywide.
Sure. And that was, that 350, to your understanding, was for these five vehicles?
I don't, it wasn't necessarily earmarked for anything specific, I don't think. I mean, it was just in starting the county pool or whatever of vehicles.
So to be clear, we already have a risk or an ERNR fund, I'm sorry. We already have an ERNR fund that's been operating for many years in Franklin County. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yeah, we just, for whatever reason, in the past, the Sheriff's Office and vehicles were pulled out of the ERNR fund. And for whatever reason in the past, it was put in the hands of the sheriff to run and operate that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And how long ago was that done?
Oh, it's been eight, nine years, oh, was it?
I think it was the Latham days.
Yes, so I mean, so it's been, it's been a while, eight, 10 years ago. I think was when.
17?
13.
13.
Yeah.
Because the county has been running for a very long time an ERNR fund. That's where all of our road graders and all that kind of stuff go through. So this is a request for $300,000 for an unknown number of vehicles or just for a generic pot of money to do something with? Or do you have a plan for it?
No, we have a rotation plan. The aging vehicles would be replaced. Some of that would be to replace patrol vehicles. We do have a couple of detective vehicles that are end of life that we could use that money to replace, which the cost would be obviously less than a patrol vehicle just because of the setup.
So trying to balance this with last year, so $350,000, we have five vehicles that's incoming. They asked for $300,000 this year, but Public Works thinks that we need closer to 500 to do that.
That was $500,000 for this year that was mentioned to me.
Oh, I understand.
But I'm not sure what, I'm not sure where we're at with. I think last I heard is that Craig may have been wanting to wait until 2026 to fully start everything, but I'm not entirely positive on where we're at with moving things over and doing the change that we've talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not on the first one.
On the law enforcement equipment?
Yeah. So could you speak to this one as it relates to the CCOM project and how that's all going?
I spoke with Michael this morning and I guess our new portable radios are available. They just, we have to get with CCOM and see when we're going to roll those out. It was my understanding in talking to him that there was no money that was used to purchase the mobile radios for the vehicles. That money was diverted somewhere else and we were going to have to utilize the current radios. And then once they reached end of life, then they'd be replaced by CCOM once we started paying our rent, for lack of better words. So we did, we did get mobile radios for the five new vehicles. So they will have new radios equipped in the five new vehicles that are coming in, but the replacement of the older mobile radios is going to be initially at our expense.
Okay, that's different information that I have. Could you speak to that, Michael? It's my understanding this project paid for the radios that were necessary to equip all 23 agencies, both mobile, which have already, or I'm sorry, portable, which have already are in hand, and the mobiles, which are not all in hand but are coming shortly.
So if I understand what you're asking, the portable radios have all been received and are sitting over at BCS waiting to be deployed. I don't have it scheduled. I've been out for the last couple of weeks, so I don't know when that's going to happen exactly yet. For the Sheriff's Office, they did not replace their mobile radios in their vehicles because they function on the new system, the same as the new ones do. So they'll stay the same. So they'll stay the same and as they fail, they'll replace them to help reduce the costs to keep us down as low as we could go on that overall budget.
So you answered the question mostly, excuse me, but the, the radio upgrade project will pay for the new mobile radios as the old ones fail. The individual agencies are not going to front the replacement.
Okay, so for, if they fail prior to the project being completed, there, to the best of my knowledge, there's no plan for BCES to step up and say, oh, we need to go ahead and get another mobile radio. So that would be on the agency. Once the project is completed, whether BCS is standalone or independent, then yes, that is true at that point, then they would take their vehicle in or ask for another radio.
So forgive me, I'm getting in territory that I'm not real familiar with. The, the five vehicles that we're getting ready to take out of circulation and put five new ones in that have new radios, is there enough value in the five radios, the mobile radios, that it will be coming out of those to limp us along until we get to, until the go date?
So no crystal balls, the five new vehicles that we, that we received, we're talking about those two. We did purchase for those as part of the project. We got those, those five mobiles, those are new and have been delivered. The five that are coming out of service, I would highly recommend that we hold on to those five and that service life could continue to limp us along. Before we install them, I would recommend that we discuss it with BCES because they may not want to put them back in.
Yeah, and I understand that, I'm just, I'm looking at the request in front of us and I believe from what my knowledge is that this has already been taken care of, I believe, based on, you know.
So it's, the issue would be if anything additional comes up that wasn't requested as part of the project. So let's say the sheriff's office asked for 70 radios as part of the project. If they need 71, there is no funding mechanism currently to pay for that. Or if something breaks of the old equipment before they get the new radios deployed, so Monty's portable goes down, that's on them to repair or replace that prior to the end of the project.
That's, that's why I was wondering if these five radios that are coming out of service could potentially get us across the date where the, the project does the replacement.
I think the mobiles can, portables, we just don't have any, we don't have any spares, we don't.
Yeah, but, but we already have the, the portables.
The new portables are coming in, correct?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, they are here, yes.
Yeah, so based on that, I believe that this is already taken care of within the project. That would be my belief.
That, that would be the hope, yes, but the ones that we're talking about have already been in vehicles for more than five years, so what's the end of life, I don't know.
Yeah.
We're, we're hopeful it's much beyond that, but.
Yeah, is, our, our go date on the project is approximately?
July of 26.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I was going to say it was June, but yeah, July of 26. And they are advanced in it, I know that it's going well.
Yes.
Any further questions or comments?
No. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
All righty, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Sheriff.
Next we have corrections. Harman.
What are rifles?
Number one?
Rifles. Is that rifles?
Welcome, Mr. Harman.
Kamari, say.
You got him dialed up, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Whenever you're ready.
I think I'm ready, yes.
Like your uniform.
You're looking sharp.
Oh, thank you. The troops did a good job at picking out the colors and the patches and the badge, so I commend them on that, so, thank you.
Isn't it true, Chief, that they start humming Hail to the Chief when you walk in the building?
I hope not. I, I hope not. So on our corrections budget, I, I just want to say that it's, there's a few things that were, were significant increases. There's a few things that we've decreased, especially when it comes to the medical. I tried to do the best I could with medical and we're actually not going to be paying for $426,000 for the MOUD program anymore. It's gone away, but we're going to absorb that program into our medical as we, as, as we go forward next year. And that was the biggest piece that was a deduction. The rest of it is, a lot of things was upkeep that we haven't done in the past three years. We've been at status quo for quite some time and if you look at, when it comes to our, our, like our electricity, sewage, water, things like that, those have, those have gone up exponentially. I mean, this, this year alone has gone up quite a bit. I think the uniform budget was something that we didn't have in corrections and that's now underneath us. We tried to be very frugal with that as well, so that was my speech.
That's it, we're done?
We're done. And there's a few vehicles that need to be replaced. Two of the, we didn't ask for, to replace two of the Fords that are really high mileage and, and we only asked for one. We'll make do with the second one and just use a new one if, if that's offered to us. Handguns, that was, that's a big thing that Captain Jansky and I went through and, you know, it was a big push to try and do it this year, but we decided not to and put that on next year's budget.
There's been, there was a comment at the last meeting, did you receive all of your handguns back from the sheriff's department?
No, we're missing six.
Still missing six?
Right.
And there was one vehicle that was taken and totaled, is that the vehicle we're going to replace?
Correct. We don't know where that vehicle is.
It's probably a scrapyard by now.
Yes.
As it pertains to the budget, and I might have, I don't know if I was in between, but Chief Harman has also got a new revenue generator for the county when it comes to the tablets and the commissary and maybe just speak to that just a little bit.
Yeah, sure. So I contacted CTEL the beginning of the summer and asked them if they would come and give us a quote on what it would take to get tablets in the, in the facility for the offenders. It's a, it's a form of revenue and it's a form of entertainment for the inmates, but it's also, there's legal stuff that the tablet can hold and visitations and things like that. And they actually came down two months ago and did a walkthrough and assessed our building and they're actually going to pay for all of it. The county won't have to put in wifi or, you know, any type of anything, they're going to handle all of it. And there, there is a, you know, the offender, whatever they do, there's three things that they do that are the most. It's called chirping, which is basically texting. They get charts for texting, the video visitation they can do from the iPad instead of going to the kiosk, which allows more offenders to actually contact their family and, and that type of stuff and also does mail as well. And so anytime that they use it for commissary or anything like that, there's, there's a fee and the county receives a fee for that. And so it's a great source of revenue that can be used to offset whatever it is that we're looking at.
Do you have any projections?
Any projections of when it will be installed?
Install revenue?
So, so I can, I can only speak to what I know of Benton County. They've been running it for the last couple of years, although their numbers are around 400 to 500 offenders and six months of this, the first six months of this year, they, they had a revenue of 700,000. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not hoping that we get that much, but, but for the, the offenders of 200 inmates, I'd say that's probably six months, probably about a good 200,000 to 300,000.
So the first six months of this year, they were at 700,000?
Correct.
So they were almost 100,000 a month?
Correct.
With six to 700 inmates?
They're, they're roughly 400 to 500.
Four to 500.
When did you say that would be implemented?
So we're, they're planning on installing the chargers in November and, and they're sending 210 iPads for the offenders to use. They will, they will not be assigned to each offender. They have to actually sign on to, they can grab one and sign on to.
Check them out like a.
Correct, correct.
So, and who is paying for this?
CTEL. They've been with us since I've been at the county. And I've been with them wherever I've gone, I've, I've brought CTEL into the building and they've been pretty good partners with us.
So it's a revenue sharing operation, I'm sure, they're taking some and then we get some.
And we get some, that's correct.
Good deal.
I think you may have answered one of my other questions. Previously, we used to transfer, we, we used to have to transfer from the, from current expense to the commissary fund to keep it sustainable. We were transferring almost 200,000 a year for several years and, and there may have been some stuff that you've unraveled with the contract, with the, with Elliott Summit, but that maybe made it so this wasn't needed anymore either, but maybe this is another piece of it as to, so, so this is accurate that we won't need a transfer going to that fund for this year?
Correct.
And how, I don't see it up there, how is the commissary fund doing? What's it bringing in a month or a quarter?
On, on a monthly basis right now, they're sitting between, it's between 10,000 and 15,000 monthly.
Where are we at with the accreditation of the jail?
So we have started our accreditation for spring and, and talking to the accreditation managers, we, they're actually going to use our last one that we were accredited before.
I was going to say, what happened to it?
Yeah, well, the sheriff took it from us. He, he went to the board and they, they took it from us and said we have to go through the process again.
Even though you were the one running the jail, they could take it away from us like that?
That's correct. It's, it's done through WASPIC and their accreditation team and, and they have the right to do that. And so basically, we have done all the, all the things necessary to set us up for spring. We only have to hit the nine criticals. We don't have to go all the way through the accreditation again, just the nine that they asked for and if we pass that, we'll be accredited for spring quarter next year.
Full faith and trust that we will pass with flying colors, so.
It will be done.
I appreciate you, Mr. Harman.
So, question about that, is it an individual or is it the facility or the institution that's accredited?
It's the facility that's accredited.
So the facility was accredited and, and he was able to get them to resend that accreditation, not because the facility isn't still what it was, he just had it removed from, from the facility?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And there's got to be a cost to this. What is this cost to the taxpayers for that to be pulled and then have to have it done again? What's that going to cost the taxpayers of the county?
So there is a fee to going through accreditation. It's a one-time fee to go through it.
And what is it?
And it's, it's roughly about $2,900. And to go through the process and, you know, like I said, he has the right to do that. He was the sheriff, he was sheriff over the jail, that's his perspective. He could have left it there, but he didn't, so. But in the meantime, we're moving forward, that's, always tell my people, we just move forward.
Right.
And, and we'll be ready for spring. We're already gearing up for it anyway, we're pretty much, we're, I think we're probably in our last quarter and we'll be done with, there's a few little things we have to, have to achieve and mainly it's on me, the chief. I have to meet the criteria, which was, one of them was executive leadership and I've already done that. And so they, I've got my certificate now, so.
So bottom line, I'm trying to make it out, on, on your budget, are you break even or asking or increase or a decrease?
There's, there is going to be increases. If you look like the professionals, the professional services, that will increase right there because basically what's happening there is we are getting rid of the MOUD program, which, which is the 443. That program is going away. We will no longer have that. But we also have to keep that program going. It's part of, it's part of the healthcare authority program that we'll be involved in starting January 1. And so that's why I'm asking for the increase in the medical, is to keep some of that program going. It, it's part of the, the, kind of like the return to community for offenders. It's, it's a program that keeps evolving and we have to have counselors and, and people that actually do billing for that through Medicaid and Medicare and so that's part of it as well.
I can't read the bottom line, Tim, can you help me out?
570,056 dollars increase.
Increase, 570?
Correct. So part of it is the, as the chief mentioned, is the 472,000 for professional services, medical services, which this actually brings this back more in line with the spending in 2023 and 2024. It was 1.9 and then 2.1 in 2024. So last year, it was dropped to 1.4 million dollars and part of the rationale of that at the time was that there was new Medicaid funding that was coming in and it was unsure how that was going to work. It was unsure if Medicaid was going to be paying that stuff directly, if we were going to be getting money for it. It was just unknown at the time and so ultimately what was done was, the budget was reduced and then, and then we ended up, we're having to deal with that this year because they're going to need more budget this year because the spending has, has continued and I think the Medicaid program's going to start back up 1-1 if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
But it, but this brings it back up into what it really has been in, in the past. It was just dropped for one year due to the Medicaid stuff that was an unknown at the time, how we were, how it was going to be handled. It was still in, the contract was being worked out at that point.
Yeah, that was a setback too, that when the split happened, we were geared for July 1st to start with the healthcare authority, but when the split happened, they, they put us on the back burner. they, they put us on the back burner. They put us in, they put us in Cohort Two instead of One. And, um, there was just some documents because we had to separate documents from the sheriff and, and corrections and it, we missed the deadline. And, and so basically, basically we had to restart everything and go through the process again, which we're doing right now for the January one. Um, the projected for, for those, for that, um, those fees will, or for us, revenue for us is, um, it, last time I checked was five hundred and twenty-six thousand, um, which they will, will fund us, um, for being in the Cohort Two starting January one.
Yeah, Mr. Denzel.
Uh, the other thing I'd like to, I think that we might have some un, uh, I don't know even what the costs are gonna be. Uh, Beau and Michael are here, so they might be able to chime in, but, um, um, there're gonna be additional costs probably associated with, uh, uh, chiefs and the jails' subscription to BI-PIN, the Bi-County Police Information Sharing Network. That's on, we didn't need to do that, but decisions were made, uh, to where now we're gonna be spending more money because of that. So anyway, I just think that you should know that.
Because there's not sharing happening between the two departments.
Correct. In fact, there was a wiping out of the entire, the way I understand it, there was a wiping out of the entire, all the ORIs are taken and, and now there's a jacket issue. It kind of is a little technical, but, uh, it's a, an expense that was, that we're having to make as a county that I think needs to be taken into consideration when discussing both the sheriff and the corrections budget.
Would you, would you flesh that out just a little bit for me so that I have a better understanding?
So all of the agencies in tri-cities are, are, are contributing to BI-PIN. We all, um, contribute into BI-PIN. We have our own ORI numbers and things like that.
What ORI?
It's originating, uh, number for, uh, the agency itself.
Okay.
In layman's terms. And so basically, um, we have been set up with, we kind of share the system with Benton County and our Tyler system and, and that's how we do our system, the, the roads, deputies and police officers use another system. And, um, they're kind of, kind of co-mingle with each other and that's the problem with what we're having is number one, the system doesn't work as it should. It was, it was asked and for, there were agencies were asking for a lot of things and, and those things didn't happen. Um, and so now they're looking at, at going with a new, uh, company or new vendor and, um, for the jail, for us, we don't typically have to follow what the other agencies do. We can actually break away and go with somebody like Spillman and, and do our own jail management booking system. Uh, we just won't be connected with the other agencies. That's, that's basically what it is.
So I'm, I'm assuming what you're describing is Richland PD can go into the system and see who you're holding and, and all that type of stuff.
You're correct.
And because everybody's using the same system, everybody can see that, where if you broke away, then they couldn't come in to see, they would have to call or.
Correct.
Email or whatever to have access to that information.
Correct.
So from an efficiency standpoint, this is, it's more efficient when everybody's attached to the same thing.
Now the, I know that, um, I know that several agencies like, uh, Yakima County, they use, uh, Spillman. I heard that they were gonna change, but I haven't heard anything else than that. Um, but it, it would be nice to follow all, you know, tri-cities and Yakima, we all say, share the same system because all the information is there and you can actually see who's coming and, and, and going from each county. Right now that doesn't happen.
Yeah. Brian, could you, could you flesh out a little bit what you said about not sharing and, and that being an additional expense?
Yeah, um, and, and Beau, I, maybe you can speak to this too, a little bit more, uh, eloquently, but in general, just basics here, um, Franklin County isn't seen as one entity. The jail is seen as one entity and the sheriff's office is seen as an entity. And, um, rather than share that and have the ability to continue like we have been continuing, um, we have been hit with, uh, uh, you know, there might be a budget increase or it might be a cost associated with having the jail now set up because, and I mean, you just tell me and I'm not trying to play politics, but I believe that the thing was is that the sheriff was unwilling to allow the jail to continue to use.
That's, that's hard to speak to from my, my point of view too, but, um, the sheriff and corrections were under one ORI, which, which is a unique number for the agency. Uh, with the separation, they need a separate agency ID, the ORI. And, uh, the Tyler solution that BI-PIN supports right now, they don't have the capacity to add that ORI to the system, so they're saying that's gonna be an additional cost. In addition to that, they're kind of saying, well, we also need to upgrade our system and we've got a lot of other projects that are more important to BI-PIN than, uh, Franklin County's ORI getting updated into that system, so is that.
Sort of, I mean, maybe the chief can, can, uh, speak to it too, but I just think it's important to keep in mind as we're in a budget situation with dwindling, uh, revenues, you'd think that we'd want to work together to try to, uh, find and realize as many savings as possible and we're not doing that on this.
What, what is the, why?
Yeah, again, I'd like to ask you, cause I, I, but what I'm saying is accurate, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, any idea of the cost if we were to get the ORI?
We, we actually already have the new ORI number and so we, we, we're not using the sheriff's ORI number anymore, so we are separate.
Cost to obtain that?
Um, yes, there was a cost to obtain that.
How much was it?
And I, I don't, I can't tell you right offhand, but it was a couple thousand dollars.
Just a couple thousand?
Yes.
Which is money, but.
At the latest BI-PIN, uh, meeting, they were asking for like about a twelve thousand dollar expenditure if we wanted to try and do certain things with it, but we kind of waited, we told them to wait on that until we saw what all happened. But, uh, again, I just think it's, you all are the fiduciaries and responsible for the budget.
I, I'm just trying to have a better understanding if, if, I mean, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, Bonnie, I don't know if you can speak to it. I mean, why? What is, is there, is it, is it access to something that sheriff doesn't want other people to have access to or what's the reason we wouldn't? We share a parking lot right now. Why can't we share the ORI? I just don't know. I, I'm not saying that it's right or wrong, I'm saying I don't know.
Mr. I wish I could tell you myself why there was the, the hurry up and, um, and get corrections off of the, well, let's, let's put it to you this way, it started out that way and he did back off and, um, and we were underneath the sheriff's office ORI, um, and we're just waiting to get our, our own, because we knew we had to. And, um, and then when the, when it officially came that, that the, the, that there was action to move forward with pulling, pulling the plug for corrections, luckily the state patrol had our back and, and, um, they kept things rolling for us until we got it.
Well, thank you to them. Um, so, I mean, speaking of that, we, we do share a, a parking lot. Is there, are you allowed to park in a, in a sheriff's, uh, sheriff's department parking space or is that something that's been separated as well? I mean, I, I really don't understand why that we're, why that we can't work together as an entity and, and, and be efficient for the citizens of this county. I don't understand.
Correct. And, and I believe too also that, um, when the sheriff, um, received, um, the warrants back into his office, they are under his set of ORI numbers. That's, that's his thing. And for us, we needed a separate one. And so that's why, that there was a change in, in that as well.
Yeah. Please.
So I, uh, I'm not gonna speak for, for Sheriff Raymond. I mean, that's for him to do. But there is, and there has been some issues with, uh, employees accessing information for wrongful purposes. And if they did that under the sheriff's ORI number, then he is responsible. And he wasn't managing the jail. So that was one of the reasons that I know of. If there's more, I'm not sure what they are.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I just don't know.
Well, if somebody's using that information other than what it's intended for, isn't that a crime?
Well, the, they, the agency can lose their, uh, ability to use the system.
Right.
That's what ends up happening is the state patrol.
For that or is it just an assumption?
We've had incidents where we've looked into, uh, we've had internal investigations where we found employees that have used it to look up daughter's boyfriend or, or something inappropriate that, that we could get in trouble for.
Thank you.
That's true.
I just, I, it, it's something that's so far outside of my world, I just don't have a, I mean, is it as simple as sharing a parking lot or is it deeper than that and, and it's deeper than that?
We only ask the questions because we simply don't know.
Yeah.
Right, I understand. I understand.
That's why I gotta tell people, don't talk in acronyms, because I don't know what they mean.
All right, is there any other questions?
Any other questions?
Um, I got a question, I think probably more appropriate for Tim. So as we've, um, had this separation of, of agencies, now the Department of Corrections and, and the sheriff's office, I know that there, over time, some of the budgets were, were combined. Um, I know uniforms were one of those. Um, could you speak to that process of how, how do we separate that properly? Have we done that already? Have we done it in some cases, but not all cases? Um, I don't know, I don't, I, I'm not sure exactly how to ask that question, but I know that there's something there to.
I mean, I think uniforms would be, would be one of them. I think, I think the other one that maybe was hinted at before was like the sheriff's support specialist, if people were working on, or the support specialist, if, if people were working on, if they're in one, one office department working on another one or whatever. I mean, there may have been some commingling of that. Uh, I mean, I think with the separation now, I think we can clearly get people working on just the area that they should be working on and charge the right, um, right, right department. But as far as the, the uniforms and stuff like that, the chief has those, um, added in as a request for, for this year, for the twenty twenty-six budget. Um, and we had moved money earlier for twenty twenty-five to get him some funds for.
To reflect that.
To be able to spend this, this year.
Chief, could you speak to that, the question we asked earlier when the sheriff's office presented, um, about the, you know, the warrants and that kind of stuff? Um, they're asking for additional support in that way, saying that it was in the jail. It's a statutory obligation of the sheriff's office. Could you speak to that, any, any insight on, on that question? There was six people, um, fulfilling those roles across both agencies before. They're asking for an additional one. Does that mean that, that one could come out of, out of corrections now, um, with that, with the warrants now being in, within the sheriff's office or could you speak to that?
So as far as, um, the warrants are concerned, the warrants are, are where they're supposed to be in their proper placements now that we split. Um, as far as, um, people that he may need, um, I would say he probably does, yes. And the only reason why I say that is there, there's protocol for that, for, for warrants. Um, it, it has to be monitored twenty-four hours of the day, uh, because, um, as we know, bad guys don't sleep and, and they're, and at night is the, the, the critical part of that. And, um, and someone has to be there to confirm that warrant. And, and the way they're doing it now, and I can't, I, I, mind you, I don't see their operations, but I can only guess what I see coming through emails is a road deputy has to come off the street to actually, uh, send us, the jail, the warrant, where it could be done otherwise with another employee to, to monitor that system. Um, if they make, or I don't know, but if the, if the sheriff went in agreements with CCOM to have it monitored that way, that's, I don't know, that's up to him or I don't know how he would do that. Um, but I would say that yes, warrants is a full-time job and where it was in the jail, it really stressed my people out in master control because they were actually having to, um, it, it's a two-person job and they were down to one and they were actually having to open doors, handle emergencies, plus handle warrants at the same time. So that, so, so I would say, yes, it probably is a need.
So with there being six in the position prior and now with the separation, irregardless of the separation, it was, there was a need for an additional person to help with that operation anyhow, irregardless of the split.
Correct.
That, that's helpful having that, having that context. Thank you.
Commander Harmon, can we speak to a little bit about the occupancy of the jail? Where are we at? How many beds are still available? And have you been contacted by any other agency, state or federal, about using those beds?
So, um, our, right now, our ADP is about two-twelve. We, uh, we, the summer we were, we were sitting around a hundred and seventy and as of late, um, we are up in the two hundreds. Our capacity's three hundred and we don't, we don't like to go above two fifty and the reason being is that we're actually putting three offenders in, in a cell that was designed for two. And so we kind of keep our numbers below two fifty. Um, as far as, uh, contracts, we've signed all the contracts I know of except for one and they have not reached out to us lately and that's the marshals.
Federal marshals?
The federal marshals. They, um, we are actually, um, they have been booking people in, um, into the jail, but we have not signed a contract with them. They have not reached out to us. And I tried reaching out to them and they sent me to a website and the, the, the web, it takes a magician to get through their website.
Okay. All righty. Well, I think we can, uh, probably assist in that in a little bit too, about making that contact happen. Because I understand they're paying a heck of a rate for occupying those detainees.
It's about, uh, six dollars more than what our local agencies are paying right now.
Okay.
They, for some reason, they put a, it used to be, it would go by, um, the area you were in, like King County, they would get a hundred and sixty-four dollars, uh, you know, a day. And, uh, from my understanding, the federal government has now brought that back down to where everybody in the state pays a flat fee or they will compensate a fat, a flat fee, which is right, right around a hundred and ten, right there.
Okay.
Does that cover our cost?
And that covers our cost.
And then some.
And, and a little bit more.
You do have maintenance and repairs and.
Correct.
Choked-off toilets. Okay. We know what goes on down there.
Him saying that reminds me, you, you said our, our, uh, waste disposal and water and the, those different bills had risen significantly. Do you have anything you can attribute that to?
No, like our power bill, um, we were, an expenditure, we were sitting at about seventy-five thousand for the year and, um, I know almost every month we were hitting about se, six, sixty-five to seven thousand dollars a month just for electricity. And, and, um, that's a big increase. Same with the water. Water has, um, gone up as well. Um, not so much the sewage, um, but, but definitely the water and, and the power has gone up.
Don't feel like the Lone Ranger. Ours goes up every year on the farm.
I bet.
It is. It's an entity you don't have no control over, just like insurance, and it's constantly going up.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your time.
There is just a couple of small requests in the corrections food service as well.
Food service, yes.
Twenty thousand additional for food supplies is the big, is the big one.
Yes, um, Summit Foods is requesting a, uh, they, they actually wanted a thirty-two percent CPI, which is just an acronym for increase in their budget because food has gone up and, um, I, I. And um, I I said no. A- and in doing that, saying no to them, I I I think they're they're the last, well, Summit Foods is the last company, or they are on this side of the state. They're predominantly on the on the west side. And and I'm, we're looking at other agencies to come in and do our fo- food service. And um, I just gotta give them ninety days and to vacate, and and then the new company will come in. And um, it it probably will be Airmark, that they're they're local and and uh they actually have contracts with Yakima and Benton County, so we actually have support um, and doing that as well. So that that fee may go down, because of just if we do sign a contract, it'd be under what is right, what we have right now.
How are we doing on the commissary where the adults in custody can order their own food?
Um, pretty good. Um, again, that is under Summit. They actually run that program for us. And I know that there's been a couple comp- well, one company in particular, Keef, that actually wants to come into our building and and do business for us, and they and they can be absorbed with uh a contract with uh Airmark as well.
Yeah, I was surprised at how much revenue was driven off of that, so I was curious to know if they were encouraging them to order off the menu.
Offenders love their soda pop and top ramen, so.
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? Tim, is that it?
That's it. I mean, there's the jail commissary that was kind of hinted at a little bit. It's a standalone fund.
I believe the figure you gave us on that commissary per month was a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty thousand? Is that what you said?
For the for the year?
Yeah.
Yes.
A month?
Yes.
Yeah.
Year yearly income, if I remember.
It's yearly income.
Year yearly income.
Yes.
Is a hundred and twenty, a hundred and ten, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Alrighty, well, let's just hope that that their uh, the tablets and everything comes through, and that revenue comes in. I think it could just about be a wash for you here.
Yeah, absolutely.
If that comes in.
I'm looking forward to it. I know the offenders are looking forward to it as well. They keep asking my officers every day, when do the tablets come in? When the tablets come? And you know, uh it it's a way for them to keep in touch with their families and 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 uh and keeps them occupied. That's the biggest thing, because if they're not occupied, they're damaging something. And that's that's on the taxpayers. We don't need that. And and um, I I'll give you an example of that, is uh Cootney County just um put their tablets in last month. They were having the uh talking to their chief. They were having about nine fights a week, um, sometimes two fights a day. And they had several units that were always continue on lockdown, just because of the fighting. And they actually put the system in, and uh they have five hundred tablets, and uh their fights went to zero.
They're too busy on Facebook.
Yeah, they're just too busy talking to their families or chirping and and.
Well, let's just remember one thing, they're human beings, too. They made a mistake. They're paying their price.
Correct.
They gotta be treated humanly, humanly, yes. I think that would help everybody out.
I think it would, too.
Alrighty. All right, but any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mr. Danzel.
I think that the chief is doing a remarkable job, and I would be remiss if I didn't say throughout this uh pro- this whole process that uh it's been probably like two dozen people that work for him have come up to me and told me that, and uh it just needs to be called out every once in a while. It's really bright stuff to go after revenue generators like that, and Commissioner Bowman and I were sitting here doing the math, and even if it's a fraction of what Benton County is is uh is being able to realize in revenues, we need more outside-the-box thinking, so I want to commend you and uh and your staff for a job well done.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
I would.
Thank you.
I would agree with that with that sentiment, you know, that I come and see you pretty often and and uh appreciate the the high morale and and uh I'd love to uh share a number of the nicknames that I've been told by your staff that they call you, but it's probably not the appropriate.
It's one of them, Big Popper or something like that.
It's a little bit more colorful than that. It's it's uh, yeah, anyway, um your your staff look up to you and they respect you and and uh when you were sharing with me how many uh resumes that had come in, um, and and I would attribute that to people that that know and want to work for you. So hats off to you and and uh, yeah, what what Brian said, and and uh I think that outside-the-box thinking, if there's ways that we can bring in, bring in some revenue, we can increase morale with with inmates, um inmate behavior and so forth, it's uh it's uh, that can truly be a win-win.
But like the movie says, if we build it, they'll come.
Careful with that now.
We don't want too many of them to come.
We don't want too many of them, but yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Says we have one more area here to cover today, and that is the uh.
I think it's built in for just uh, you know, review of if we need to be looking at anything?
Yes, review of miscellaneous funds.
Did you have any of that?
Tim?
Pretty much. I mean, there's, I mean, there's some miscellaneous funds we, I mean, we could we could go through, we could do some brief look-throughs if 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 the commissioners would like to.
It's up to you guys.
It's mostly, it's mostly built-in time for for review of stuff, but I mean, there's, you know, the there's even just like the the point oh nine fund that we could look at or and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, let's take, let's take a look at the point oh nine fund.
If there's, if there's pieces that we can knock out that are farther down the week, I don't know if we can, but let's do.
They're scheduled for other days, so I don't know if they're ready today. That's the problem.
No, no, we probably won't be able to do that, but it might, it might save us our final day.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
We always finish early on these budget talks.
I have to go place a phone call. So I'll be right, but it'll give you time to formulate any questions you might have, or?
Yeah, let's look at the point oh nine fund.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Brian, could you grab me one of those waters?
No, you don't need one, Brian. Yeah, give those to Rocky.
Thank you.
No, he don't, he can drink that one.
Parkus, how are you doing, man? Hey, I was gonna say, I am so sorry that I just that you invited me to come in and speak to something.
I got news for you. That's all recycled. Doesn't matter whose name's on the bottle. Yep, it's like a John Deere tractor, caterpillar, and charge ten percent more.
So the point oh nine, um, we're, I'm estimating that we'll start the year with about tw- twelve point two million dollars. Correct. Um, have sales tax collections of right around three million dollars. Um, we've been trending up. We had two point five in twenty twenty-three, two point eight in twenty twenty-four. This, so this one seems like it's been a little more stable, but maybe this one's a little high, just with what what we know about revenues lately, but but I don't think it's too, I don't think it's that far off. Yeah, so we would, so between the two, we would have fifteen, sorry about the shaking here, everybody walking up there. Fifteen million, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is what we would have in the fund to spend for for next year. Correct. Yep, economic development project.
So.
Which there's not anything, um.
Nothing.
There's not anything in it right now. The, there's there's no projects that have been approved for it currently.
So something on that, if you look at like Shalan County Economic Development Fund, um, that's a template that I think that we could look at. Um, there's the Tri-County, which is Stevens, Ferry, and Shalan County, I th- no, not Shal- Shalane. Ponderay, Pro- Ponderay, Stevens, and Ferry. They have a Tri-County Economic Development component. There's a couple of different ones that um it would be good for us to to look at and kind of develop a a template. Um, the way that it's kind of traditionally been done here is Pasco, City Pasco, Port Pasco, um, kind of get together and and divvy it up with the county, and kind of everybody decides what part they're gonna take. And I think there's a lot of opportunity to stimulate economic development outside of doing it like that. It's not meant, from everything that I can read, it's not meant to be a a a kitty for the port to go compete against private development or the jurisdictions to. It's it's when when private business is putting in a gas station on the corner, and there's a need for a turn lane, it's a way that that it can be dedicated to enriching or stimulating value in the community, you know, and the whole community gets to use it. You know, we, there was a a million dollars allocated to, for the uh Dairy Gold Project, for for getting that Dairy Gold Gold Project going. I don't know. Yeah, this is a great place to look at at its. Yeah, Pasco's Processed Water Use Facility. I'm. I I think we kind of looked at that, and I think I think that there's ways you can use them on a road if it's a new if it's a new thing, but I don't I don't think maintenance is I don't think maintenance is a is a ex- is a permitted use for economic development funds. I don't believe so. Yes. Nope. USDA Rural Development. Um, so they they got money. They got a grant for the supplies for a water system, but they don't have any money for to install the pipe and the parts, and I don't know how that ended up. That's been a a year since we.
Scroll. So I mean, there's a use of revenues right here, which um, which serving economic development purposes in rural areas, construction of affordable workforce housing infrastructure or facilities, and personnel and economic development offices.
There's quite a few ways that we could um help Kalodas, Conell, Misa, Basin City. There's there's a a lot of different components that we could do, but um. So all of that, I believe, is new. I don't think it's.
Yeah, I think it would be the infrastructure for a area that's being developed, would be my thought.
Not maintenance. Yeah, you could do a new system, just you, it's not for repair of an old system, or re- repair of an old road, or that kind of thing. Brian knows it good, and so does um our consultant, Eric Johnson. He's really sharp at this stuff. He he could, he could recite half of this thing, I believe. Shoot, half of it's probably his work, since he was a director of WASAC for so long.
Do we meet that criteria? Hundred people per square mile?
I mean, we were able to, we were able to put in the DAX. I'm I'm not sure. I mean, it's public facilities serving economic development purposes in rural counties, so I mean, I I don't know, I think it's it seems fairly broadened to in some degrees. I mean, it's just, you have to be able to say that it's serving these economic development purposes.
Go down to B under four.
Yeah, so you just have to show that it's creating or retaining businesses and jobs. Or the or the assessor.
I I think we have, I think we have a workshop coming up on the twenty-first with that, I think was is was verified, that that's coming up.
Uh, so this was a point oh nine. This this was that. Um. I mean, we've got very, I mean, we've got various funds that we haven't done anything with for for um for a long time, like the Park Acquisition and Capital Fund that we've uh that we've been collecting on for a number of years, but haven't.
So that's not a tax, I don't believe. That's that's.
They are like growth management fee, GMA fees that we that we collect. Park Acquisition.
Oh, yeah.
Coming out of the GMA, but should we continue?
Tim, are these the same thing as uh conservation futures?
I'd have to, it seems like I had done some looking up on some of these a year or two ago. I I can't remember the the. I'd have to, it seems like I had done some looking up on some of these a year or two ago. I, I can't remember the, the... Here's the deal. You have the ability with, I have to make sure that these are conserva- they have been called different names. It's kind of like the open range versus ra- range area delineation that we went through. But if it's the fund I'm thinking of, conservation futures are allowed to, uh, you can utilize it at a one-time shift and one time only. So you gotta take like the whole thing or nothing at all, and you can, used to be able to utilize it for anything in the current expense fund. I will double check on that and make sure that that's the same thing that we're talking about.
That was parks?
Yes. It was for the purpose of acquiring more parkland. Yeah, it was, it kind of goes part and parcel with the, uh...
Exactly. Like in nineteen ninety-one, when that came out, what ended up happening is they had, uh, same thing with your range. Like when, when you get into the deal where they talk about like agriculture lands of long-term commercial significance, that whole phrase never even existed before nineteen ninety-one. It was all, it was actually modeled after, um, an initiative in Florida called Smart Growth. And the state of Florida has gotten rid of Smart Growth because it was so destructive to develop, to developers or people trying to build affordable housing. It's just, it's a real killer. I'm sorry, I'm bad.
It's just, it's just directly, you know, they say, we want affordable housing, we want this and this, but we're gonna put all this regulation in place and that, so they directly oppose each other.
You can find, uh, video footage of our current president of the United States being asked, how come there's no more, uh, low-income housing? How come there's not this or that or the other? And this is clear back in the eighties, when real estate really took a nosedive in New York. And he said it himself the best, I think, which was that the government had made it unaffordable to, to be able to build low-income housing.
Forty percent of the cost to build housing today is regulatory.
Yeah. And then when you add into that, uh, rent control, and you add into that some of the other ways that they're paid through the voucher system, it's, you know...
First time in state history, there was a jury eviction out of Spokane. That was wild. There was somebody that was so egregious and it, for so long, that the jury finally threw him out. Look out.
I was, between an avenue piece in the Middle East that I thought would never happen in my life, has anybody even noticed the government's been shut down?
Mr. Chairman, am I gonna have to make a motion?
We'll recess till tomorrow.
Perfect.
Very good.